Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order with the clerk call the roll to establish your quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Proctam Vang.
Here.
And Councilmember Guerra will be absent tonight, and Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Maple, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
My pleasure. Please stand if you are able. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maydou, Valley and Plains Miwok, Puttwin-Winntun peoples, and the people of the Bolton Ranteria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the active practice of acknowledgement for Sacramento's indigenous people's histories, contributions, and lives. Thank you.
I'll salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very well. Thank you very much, councilmember, and thank you to the members of the staff and the members of the public for being here tonight. Before we get to the special presentations, I just want to inform the public about the order with which we intend to proceed tonight. After the presentations, the consent calendar, we're going to take up Item 20, which is the proposed Storm Drainage Development Fee Ordinance. Then we are going to take up the report from the Police Department and the recommendations on the Violence Prevention Grants. And then, depending upon how late the evening is, we may take up the missing middle piece. I just wanted to give everyone fair notice here. We hope to, but if it gets to be too late, I think that item, the missing middle, is really important, and we want to make sure that it isn't just heard in a rush. So let's just see how the evening goes here. Let us begin with the special presentations. It is my honor to ask Lynette Hall and Fatima Malik to come forward so that we can recognize your incredible work around the Community Ambassador Program. This city is committed to inclusion and to doing our very best to make sure that every voice is heard. We are not perfect, but one of the signs for me that we are moving in the right direction is the innovation that Lynette, Fatima, and your team have shown in putting together this Community Ambassador Program. To actually work with community, the multilingual community, and to ensure that there are people in our neighborhoods who can literally translate and inform people about the various services that the city offers and the opportunities to get involved in community is really a model for how to not just talk about inclusion, but to practice it. And so we want to take a moment to just say thank you for developing this award-winning project and to say that we hope to help you in the very best we can grow this so that we have every corner of this city and in-between covered. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you so much, mayor and councilmembers. I am Fatima Malik, an associate planner from the Community Development Department. And I'm here with my colleague Jessica Davalos Prieto, Community Engagement Analyst from the Office of Innovation and Economic Development. We are here tonight to share more about the Neighborhood Development Action Team's Community Ambassador Program, some of the work that we've been doing, and to also celebrate our recent achievements, as well as to recognize all the hard work and dedication of each of the ambassadors. We are pleased to inform you that the program received the Best Practices Award of Excellence from the American Planning Association California Chapter. And the American Planning Association Sacramento Valley Section. This program has been instrumental in creating multilingual and multicultural bridges and relationships with those who represent linguistically diverse populations and/or historically underserved communities. Community ambassadors serve as liaisons between the city and community by attending monthly meetings to discuss upcoming community engagement activities, efforts, and events, as well as to discuss upcoming community needs, concerns, and opportunities. I'd like to share a few words from one of the community ambassadors, Mr. Shokat Ali, who wrote a letter of support for the awards application. He could not be here tonight because he has to work. So I'd like to read Mr. Ali's letter to you, which can be found on page nine of the packets. Hopefully, you received a copy. Dear APA Awards Jury, My name is Shokat Ali, and I represent South Asian Communities in Ambassador Program, which is started by the City of Sacramento. I am working as community advisor with Mutual Systems Network of Del Paso Heights. Mutual Systems Network is a nonprofit organization which is helping deprived communities and working with City of Sacramento to develop Marysville and Del Paso Boulevard. I have been working as a community ambassador with the City of Sacramento since the beginning of this year. This is a great program to build a bridge between deprived, non-English-speaking communities and city officials. Most of the people of South Asian origin are unable to express their issues in English language. Therefore, I decided to represent at the Ambassador Program. City of Sacramento Ambassador Program is a ray of hope for immigrant and neglected communities of Sacramento. This program can be a torchbearer for other cities of the world. According to my opinion, this program deserves the award in recognition of its effort to uplift the deprived communities of Sacramento. With best regards, Shokat Ali, Community Ambassador, City of Sacramento. And now, I'd like to invite my colleague Jessica to share a little bit more about the program.
Relatively quickly, though, we have a long agenda tonight, okay? Thank you.
So the ENDA Community Ambassador Program was born out of a vision to reach our most vulnerable and underserved residents and businesses. In 2020, during the COVID-19 pandemic, there were vital programs available to help physically and economically at-risk business owners and residents. After the first round of small business support, city staff analyzed the data on who was being served and found that the recipients of loans and grants were overwhelmingly from businesses in the central city mostly owned by white and well-connected English speakers. The city hosted information sessions about these resources online to reduce the risk of COVID exposure. However, there were still large portions of the populations who weren't getting this information, such as Vietnamese business owners. Mai Nguyen is a well-known community member who serves the Vietnamese businesses and speaks the language fluently. She knew that Vietnamese business owners didn't feel comfortable with being online and needed to be approached differently. She approached the staff at the city with the idea that she could host an in-person Vietnamese-language session for small business owners in the Little Saigon area. This inspired staff to find other community leaders who were known by their communities that can help the city reach our diverse communities in the ways that they most needed. The ENDA Community Ambassador Program is a vision of multicultural bridge-building. It is a program that has helped the city create and maintain relationships and community partners, businesses, and residents from linguistically diverse populations and historically underrepresented communities. It is a vision of unity, trust, and the removal of barriers, cultural and linguistic barriers that prevent access to vital information, resources, and opportunities. What started as a pilot program of six ambassadors and six languages has now grown to 18 ambassadors representing 11 different languages and countless diverse backgrounds. We express our most sincere heartfelt thank you to our 18 community ambassadors who have stood and led the way for us. It is my distinct honor to invite Juan Carlos Ruiz Huajardo to join me to the podium to share his experience as an ambassador.
Thank you very much. I will be brief. All I want to say is it's been a great honor to serve the last two years as an ambassador for the Hispanic community. I know I speak on behalf of all the other ambassadors. We have great appreciation for this program because one of the main problems that authorities face is a lack of trust by who they govern. So approaching them in their own languages and by people from their own community, I think it's the absolutely best way to get their voices heard. In a world today where 40% of the global population cannot have access to education in their own language, I think breaking the language barrier is paramount. It's a great opportunity. And as an ambassador, I have had the chance to not only translate during some of the very important seminars that the City of Sacramento have placed together, but more importantly, communicate real-life-saving information about the resources that you guys offer, that you work really hard to put together. So the reality is like there is no point in having all those programs if they don't make it to the people and they can understand how can they benefit from them. So this is unbelievable, and we have developed a cohort of wonderful people that, in their everyday life, make networks of interactions and work hard to gain the trust of youth, children, adults, and vulnerable population. And we take this information that you put together to them and back and forth. So it's my great honor to be a part of this program, and I commend you for having it, and I hope they continue to grow, not only in Sacramento, but in other cities of California. Thank you very much.
Are the...
Before I present these awards, I would like to acknowledge and thank a few key organizations that helped with this program, Everyday Impact Consulting and Pat Davis Design Group. And now, I'd like to call up all the ambassadors and issue a certificate of appreciation to those in attendance today and an opportunity for a photo, if that would be all right.
Sure.
Yep, okay, great.
Of course.
Conrad Crump. Dmitri Garmoon. Franklin Henry. Juan Carlos Ruiz Huajardo. Krista Wu. Linda Ing. Mai Nguyen. Mary Ann Gonzalez Sims. Omar Altamimi. O'Shea Johnson. Romer Christobal. Shokat Ali. Stephen Walton. Terry Moore. Teresa Rivera. And Yang Mi Wu.
Come on right up, come on right up for a picture here.
I'm gonna stand up here. Hi, Linda. Hi. Don't want to get lost in the crowd down there.
Congratulations.
Good job, Lynette.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I like your shirt.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll tag you.
Come on, man. I got you.
All right, mayor, get in there.
Hilarious. Beautiful. Congrats.
Better than that, as they go back to their seats. Give them a big round of applause.
So, mayor, while you come up, I'm just gonna say very quickly, we have seen change in Sacramento and change for the good. And those 18 community ambassadors are making a difference in the city of Sacramento, and we can't thank them enough for what they do because that's gonna change not only this generation, it's gonna change generations to come. So this ambassador program is only gonna grow, and all those who are involved in getting it started, we just want to thank you. All those involved in doing it, we want to thank you and keep doing what you're doing because you're setting the example for the next generation to be great.
Let's move to the second happy presentation. Councilmember Valenzuela, Second Annual Golden Harvest Festival. Please.
Yes, and I believe we're doing this together, mayor, so I will get us started. I'm really happy to be recognizing the Second Annual Golden Harvest Festival and Parade. The mission of this event is to invite all communities in Sacramento to partake in celebration of peace and harmony. The organizers aim to foster a diverse and inclusive culture that embodies the values of friendliness, peace, and harmonious coexistence, and I cannot possibly think of a more appropriate time for that vision to become a reality. This year's theme is "A Greener Tomorrow for Youth" and kicked off with webinars on how residents can help attain air, clean air, clean water, and a healthy environment. And I really just want to say that Second Annual doesn't really capture the spirit of this event. You know, this was really a growth out of the Pacific Rim Festival, which many people may be familiar with, and really an attempt to expand that to include more than just Pacific Rim communities, but every community in Sacramento. And as I got to know the planning committee for last year's event, I just have to say how honored I am for all the work you've done to bring this event and grow it and to keep it going after COVID. I know it's not easy. So I really hope that everyone will consider joining us this Saturday along Capitol Mall. The parade starts at 11:30. You can write RT there for free by showing them the pass on goldenharvestparade.org, their website, and it really promises to be a spectacular display. So with that, mayor, I'll pass it to you before we call up the committee.
I just can't add much except to say that you're right, there could not be a more important time for us to gather and talk about and work towards peace and harmony. And that's what the festival represents, the Second Annual, and I'm gonna try to get by. And grateful, may this become a long-term tradition in our city.
If you make it, you could ride in a big dragon with me.
I can.
I'm gonna be in the parade. I'll be hard to miss, I think, right away. So I'd love to invite the chair of the planning committee way up here to give us a few words about the vision, and then we'll take a group photo. Thank you all for being here. I see many planning committee members in the audience, so I hope you come up to join us for the photo.
Hi, everyone. It's my and organization's honor to receive the resolution. Our team is very small, but we're a nonprofit organization and it's a volunteer-driven organization, and we work so hard, our team works so hard, to bring this festival together. So this year, as we say, the theme is Greener Tomorrow for Youth. We want the people's attention to protect our environment for our next generation. So I want to invite everybody to join our event this Saturday. I want to invite the mayor, if you can be there.
Right.
Give us a couple of units' remarks, that'll be great. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you, way. We'll do a photo now?
Let's do a photo.
So the whole committee, oh.
Mayor Darryl Steinberg and members of the council, Katie especially, thank you so much for recognizing Golden Harvest Parade and Festival. We're in our second year, and we're so proud to be a part of the peace and harmony of this community, and we welcome the entire public to be with us in front of the state Capitol and also the Capitol Mall, where we do have a parade, community outreach, as well as cultural performances with over 20 groups marching in the parade and over 20 groups part of the cultural performances. So I hope you do come and enjoy it and invite the community. On behalf of over 30 nonprofit, for-profit organizations that are part of our sponsorship, we thank the City of Sacramento. We also thank two particular City of Sacramento ambassadors, Ms. Linda Ing and also Ms. Krista Wu, for sponsoring the art contest. Last year, wonderful, elementary school to high school to seniors participating in artwork contests. So thank you so much for the city grants to help support us.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I think we were...
Yeah, I'll be real quick. So this month is also Farmer and Farmworker Month, and yesterday was William Leidensdorf's birthday. And so, you know, the elements of the Golden Harvest Festival, I mean, we're talking about agriculture, everybody, almost, I'm not sure, about a couple, families were here, cultures were represented before the gold rush. And so this is just a continuity of what was here earlier when this was still Mexico transition. So the Golden Harvest Festival is the history of our city, the gold rush.
Thank you so much. I know that, I think we have to move on to our council agenda, so if we could get the whole planning committee to come up for a photo, that would be lovely. Thank you.
But no, thank you. It's always a blessing to be in this room.
All right, thank you. Good way to start the business meeting with celebrating people who are doing good and great work in our community. Let us now move to the consent calendar. Are there items on the consent calendar that members would like to have discussed separately and are voted on separately? I see Councilmember Kaplan. Item eight, okay, let's see if we have anybody else. Councilmember Talamontes?
Comment on item 16.
All right, anybody else? Okay, so can I get a motion on the consent calendar, please?
Second.
Moved in second. Let's hear from the public, and then I'll turn it to my colleagues.
Thank you, mayor. I have just one speaker on the consent calendar, Mac Worthy on item number 11.
First of all, I'm not an African American, I'm a American Negro. My civil rights violation has been salutary. Yeah, so when you deal with ethics, we wonder who attended those meetings on ethics. Now, we saw the Sacramento Bee did bring out some things. When you write to the city manager for a grant, they're supposed to be at the same time, no exceptions. Same thing, you bid, when you open them, all bids open at the same time. But we want to say, thank the Sacramento, I probably started back taking the Sacramento Bee on a Sunday. You were doing what you should have been doing here years ago, exposing the garbage within the whole house government. So we want to thank them for that, and when you got people coming here saying things that I'm an attorney, we know it here. Only one attorney here, and I don't think she got the guts to speak up. Whoever you've been practicing law with, all you say you're the attorney is out when you come in here. That's out of, but see, that person was jogging to lead a ledge. We know what that is. I've been here, you see. You got to understand the scum of the earth, and that's what we got here, the scum of the earth.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on the consent calendar.
Okay, very good. Let's hear from Councilmember Kaplan then on item eight, and Councilmember Talamontes on item 16.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to call out that the good work that we're doing to, and the work for the streets, for people to do our tree canopy analysis and who, we have lovely trails here in the city, but we need some more shade so that people can enjoy them, and I appreciate this is what we're doing on, as part of an assessment for our active transportation plan.
Thank you. Councilwoman Talamontes?
Thank you to Jason and Tenwa, who have been working really hard on this project. Thelma and Hawk Park has been 20 years in the works, so it's a small pocket park, but it's been taking 20 years to be able to get it to where it's at today. So really excited for the community. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. We do have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Consent calendar passes. Very good. Let's get now to the lead discussion item for the evening, which is the proposed Storm Drainage Development Fee Ordinance and Resolution. I know a lot of work has gone into this. Who is going to present on behalf of the city? Okay, yep, you got it. No worries.
They were expecting consent.
Here we are. Everyone thought consent would go much longer. There we go, Pravani. There she is. Welcome.
Still having conversations about this item, so sorry. Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Pravani Vandya. I'm the Director of Utilities. The item that I bring before you tonight is a request to adjust the Department of Utilities impact fees. The Department of Utilities is charged with a vital task to ensure that the residents and visitors of the city have clean drinking water, sewer systems that work to move waste away from homes, and a storm drainage system that does not flood our neighborhoods. To meet this duty and the state and federal regulations associated with these systems, we must build the critical backbone infrastructure that is needed to support the growth of the city. DOU uses the city's general plan framework to plan for future growth. The general plan guides the decision-making process for the needed capacity for our system. The Department of Utilities is tasked with a monumental job to meet the future needs of the city. It is estimated that $2.5 billion of new infrastructure will be required to support the needs of our communities. It is our responsibility as stewards of the city to plan for this and take the necessary steps to ensure we can meet the projected needs outlined in our general plan. In recent years, DOU has completed and brought forward NEXUS studies in 2011, 2016, and 2019. All of these efforts have failed at some point in the process, and DOU's development impact fees were not adjusted as recommended by the NEXUS studies. In fact, the storm drainage development fee has never been adopted, and the separated sewer and combined sewer development fees have not been significantly adjusted since their adoptions in 1984 and 2005, respectively. The only significant adjustments to a utility development fee were in 1997 and 1998 to the water system development fee. Understanding that the proposed development impact fees adjustments that I bring before you today are only a part of the solution to the task we face, that is approximately 20% of the new infrastructure funding. However, it is a crucial piece. These adjustments are overdue and allow us to build development's portion of our needed infrastructure. The remaining 80% would be funded from utility rates. The types of projects development impact fees contribute to include water treatment plants and water supply projects. These fees will also fund portions of sewer facilities needed to convey sanitary sewage to the regional treatment plant and necessary enlargements of piping to provide additional storage capacity for the combined sewer system. In addition to new infrastructure, the water and drainage development impact fees include a buy-in component, since ratepayers have constructed infrastructure larger than what was required for their needs. The buy-in component of the fee includes depreciated costs of the water and storm drainage assets to ensure that these costs are fairly distributed between ratepayers and future development. New development is anticipated to use a buy-in to approximately 22% of the water system and 8% to 15% of the storm drainage system. The next two slides help provide a perspective on how the proposed fees compare to the surrounding area. area. Note, I'm using the single-family residential fees for comparison as they are the most straightforward to calculate and compare. The first chart is a comparison of our water development impact fee, and it shows how our proposed fee in gold compared to surrounding cities and the county in blue. Our current fee is shown on the far left in light gold for perspective on where we are starting from, and the average of all agencies is shown with the gray bar. The proposed fee is in the average range of surrounding jurisdictions, and our current fee unfortunately is too low. The next slide compares the sewer, combined sewer, and storm drainage fees. Each bar shows a combination of the separated sewer fee in blue and the drainage fee in green. The first two bars show our current fees for each system, which again are far too low or, in the case of drainage, nonexistent. The next bar in light blue and green shows the proposed fee for separated sewer with the pump drainage fee. The gold bar is our combined sewer system fee, which typically provides both sewer and drainage services to a project. As you can see again, our proposed fees are below or close to the county average and area average shown in the gray bar. Development impact fees are specifically used to fund infrastructure construction projects needed to support new development. Development impact fees are a one-time fee and are paid by the developer at the time of their building permit issuance to mitigate the impacts of their project on our infrastructure systems. Based on our 2023 NEXUS studies, we determined two things. One, adjustments to the current water, sewer, and combined sewer system impact fees are necessary. And two, the establishment of a storm drainage development fee is critical. Without adjustment of the development impact fees, the city's financial capacity to fund major water, sewer, combined sewer, and storm drainage infrastructure projects will continue to be eroded and will not keep pace with development. Delaying this will create a larger gap that over time becomes more challenging to close. The department has taken great effort to engage internal and external stakeholders on the proposed adjustments to our development impact fees. On this slide, we've outlined outreach efforts. Since early April, we have had numerous meetings with the development community. We have met with close to 30 stakeholders. We also encourage stakeholders to submit formal public comments in which we place responses on our website, as well as address general questions as they were raised. Even this month, we have provided additional internal briefings to council and have held several meetings with stakeholders. Through this process, the main concern has been for projects currently in the development pipeline. To address these concerns, DOU is proposing a phased implementation of our fee adjustments over four years. We are also proposing a five-year exemption from the adjusted fees for projects with active SB 330 and grading permit and subdivision improvement plan applications submitted before the effective date of January 22, 2024. Additionally, all projects with a building permit application that has been accepted for processing by the city and has paid application fees prior to January 22, 2024 are not subject to the adjusted fee amounts. This approach helps address the current economic market-facing development today and takes into consideration development projects that were already in the middle of the city's approval processes. Tonight, I am asking for council approval of the water and wastewater development impact fee NEXUS studies and the associated fee schedules, as well as the adoption of the storm drainage development fee ordinance. I will note that yesterday, we submitted a supplemental item that include revised resolutions that reflect the specific exemption language agreed upon with stakeholders. I also ask for the approval of the storm drainage NEXUS study and fee schedule to be continued to the November 14 council meeting to allow for the 30 days noticing needed for the new fee. I would like to conclude my presentation by reiterating the criticality of these fees to the utility systems and the sustainability of future growth within the city. Staff and consultants and I are available for any questions.
Well, first of all, I just want to compliment you and your team on some really intensive work, not just on the analytical side, but also working with all of the care holders, including the business community and the development community. We'll see how this goes tonight, but I know that based upon your work, that it is in much better shape in terms of at least coming closer to some form of consensus than it otherwise would. So I just want to say thank you. Let us hear from the public, and then we'll turn it over to the council for deliberation. We have five people signed up. I thought there might be more, but we'll take five. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Larry Larson, Chris Norim, Annie Keys, and Danielle Foster.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. Larry Larson of council with Faction Hooper LLP. We represent projects in both Delta Shores and North Natomas, and we have submitted comment letters about this and have even exchanged emails even today with staff about concerns that we have. We just received confirmation that they will be meeting with us on Thursday to discuss the issues that have been raised in our exchanges, and we're hopeful of trying to reach a resolution. But we believe, and this is only with respect to the water fee component of all of this study, and that is that there needs to be they have made revisions to the package to both the NEXUS study and to apparently the resolutions, as Pravani has just pointed out, but at least the last resolution that I saw that was in the supplemental materials doesn't take into account the revisions to the updated NEXUS study. And in order for those documents to all be consistent, the resolutions and numbers in the resolutions need to coincide with those in the NEXUS study. We're poised to meet with staff on Thursday and are here basically at this point to request that the council continue the matter for a short period of time to allow us to try and find a resolution on this issue. And that, I don't believe, would have any impact on the full development. The fees are designed to go into effect in January of 2024. We would have plenty of opportunity to resolve those issues, probably even long before the November meeting to which the drainage ordinance is being continued. And I know we've had limited opportunity to discuss the concept of a continuance with staff, and they haven't indicated whether they are in favor or opposed to it.
And you are here on behalf of a single project, is that correct?
No, two projects. The M&amp;H Realty Partners Sixth Project in Delta Shores, the major landowner in Delta Shores, and the Schumacher Properties in North Natomas, Natomas Creek, East Commerce, and Natomas Town Center on the east and west sides of East Commerce, all of which are north of Del Paso, and all of which have similar issues with respect to how this fee is going to impact.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thanks, Mr. Larson.
Chris Norim, Annie Keys. So Chris, Annie, Danielle Foster, then James Allison.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, Chris Norim, North State Building Industry Association. We had serious issues and concerns about this fee when it started, but we've worked with utilities, the mayor, council, and staff, and we're removing our opposition. We have the grandfathering language that is in there that we've reached an accord on, so thank you. Thank you for your collaboration on this. We originally had some very strong concerns because the fee increases $17,000 to $21,000 a unit, which the city's own analysis illustrated would make housing infusible, and state law says you can't do things that are going to make housing infusible. So that was the basis of some of our concern, but we're happy to say that we actually got to the point where we have an agreement on this. So I'll make a shortened tweet. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Annie Keys, then Danielle.
Keys?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. Annie Keys here on behalf of the Downtown Sacramento Partnership in the 66-block neighborhood we represent in the heart of Sacramento. We really want to acknowledge city staff, Mayor Steinberg, and Councilmember Valenzuela for their commitment to stakeholder engagement and creating amendments that really mitigate the short-term effects of this proposal. We appreciate the opportunity to work with our city partners and request that we continue these efforts through an annual report back to council with data-driven updates on ordinance implementation. In addition, we urgently ask city leadership to explore alternatives for fee offsets to incentivize more of the priority project types outlined in the city's general plan, such as infill, adaptive reuse, and transit-oriented development. When we look at development impact fees as a part of several policies being proposed, you must recognize the compounding effects this policy has on the ability to produce much-needed housing. And it's imperative that the city prioritize its discussions to curate policies that complement and not undermine our ambitious RENA and climate goals. We know housing demand is at an all-time high, but in order to make strides in increasing the supply, there must be a shift towards focused policy efforts and procedures that create clear and predictable pathways to building more homes. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Keep your comments. Danielle Foster, then James Allison.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Danielle Foster, Executive Director of the Capital Area Development Authority. As your partners at CADA, we want to thank you for the effort that's gone into the conversations around this item and for the updated recommendations from staff. And we continue to work on development of affordable housing projects downtown and in midtown for the livability and vitality of our city. I want to state specifically appreciation for staff's recommended phasing approach and the exemption categories, and I would request that the city council include housing on state-owned property as a qualifying project under SB 330. While the entitlement process is administered by the state, these affordable projects should be granted the same exemption opportunity under SB 330. I also believe this is an opportunity for this item to be part of a more comprehensive conversation on policies and fees surrounding housing, including items currently being discussed, like the mixed-income housing ordinance, so that the city can fully identify its values and the costs and trade-offs related to development. A comprehensive conversation would allow for innovative approaches to streamlining and reducing construction uncertainty. Increases to the impact fees will result in the need for additional funding for the $0 impact fee program for affordable housing units. This program is critical to the competitiveness of Sacramento affordable housing projects to leverage state and federal funding sources, and the certainty of the availability of this funding is necessary to ensure projects obtain full funding. As acknowledged by the city, increases to these fees will need to require additional funding for the $0 impact fee program in a commensurate amount. Beyond affordable housing-specific needs, the city also has an opportunity in this conversation to seek administrative and policy changes that could utilize regional best practices in reducing costs on development, as was identified in the Housing Element Program H24, explore methods to reduce the expense and uncertainty associated with.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our final speaker on this item is James Allison.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is James Allison with the Midtown Association, representing over 1,200 properties in the central city. Our mission is to make Midtown the center for culture, creativity, and vibrancy in Sacramento's urban core. I want to start by sharing our gratitude to Pravani and the entire DOU team for their willingness to come to the table and the countless hours spent working alongside the development community to bring forward these proposed fee increases in their current form. We are appreciative of the thoughtful collaboration and know that between running the numbers, the evening and weekend discussions, and the litany of feedback, that this has not been a simple or straightforward undertaking. We are appreciative also to the mayor and offer our sincerest thank you for your leadership in bringing city staff together and stakeholders together to the table to ensure that all voices were heard and the thoughtful dialogue that brought us closer to a consensus happened. We understand the importance of upgrading city infrastructure to accommodate for a growing population, as municipalities must be able to provide for their residents with the most fundamental of needs. We believe that today's proposal allows for the DOU to generate revenue for this vital endeavor while remaining sensitive to the delicate and often tumultuous development landscape. We offer that conclusion with one very slight caveat. When the city implemented its central city-specific plan to incentivize development, fees were phased on an annual basis that allowed for review of the current landscape and offered an off-ramp in case of unforeseen circumstances. As we saw during the pandemic, that process allowed the city to pause on increasing the fees in the face of economic challenges. Certainly, I believe that I can speak for all present in saying that we hope for a future with greater precedent, but as COVID has taught us, we must account for the unforeseen. So while accounting for the tremendous task in asking staff to replicate a similar framework, we simply ask that the council consider seeking a similar form of off-ramp should any dire need arise. As a final point, we would also like to voice our hopes for continued collaboration in holding further discussions on how we can work to incentivize housing in the city of Sacramento and alleviate the burdens brought on by new fees and regulatory requirements. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right, let me now turn it over to the city council. I know I have a comment or two, but I will hold off. I'll turn it to Councilmember Valenzuela, then Kaplan, then Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do want to thank you and the DOU staff for all of the work that got us to this moment. I was only seeing it from the periphery, both on Law &amp; Ledge and SENS, and so I know that what I saw was just the tip of the iceberg in terms of the amount of work that's gone into this. And so I want to appreciate that work that got us to the compromise here today, but I will express concern. I will be supporting the item today, but I do just want to like point out that not charging the fee doesn't make the need go away, that you know, by reducing fees or slowing down fees or not charging the appropriate fee, we're still going to have to figure out how to pay for that drainage. We're still going to figure have to figure that out because we can't let our communities flood. So I just want to say that I think that as much as I appreciate the concern about too fast, too much too fast with the development community, that the other side of this means that now ratepayers and residents in the city of Sacramento are going to be paying this cost one way or another potentially. And I just, not ratepayers, sorry, I saw Pravani shake her head, but we are going to be having to figure this out. Sorry, I need to be clear on that. But I just, I want to say that because I think that this isn't the only item that I feel concerned with, and I want to appreciate the conversation about looking at the totality of what we're doing in terms of fees and structure and what the outcome is that we want to achieve. Because of course, we want more housing, and of course, we want cool projects to happen. But I recall just a year or two ago, we were trying to update the parks fee, and it got tabled because when we did our NEXUS study, it turned out that we needed to like more than triple it if we were going to cover the actual cost of maintaining our parks. So we decided not to do that. But then what that means is when the South Side Park pool broke, and we didn't have we didn't have enough money to fix it because we didn't have enough money in the account to fix it. So we had to figure out other ways to do that, and thankfully, we did. But I do think that there is a balance between building the new housing and attracting the investment we want and also maintaining the level of community services that we need to make those communities livable and healthy places. And I feel like we are out of balance right now on a multitude of fronts. And so I do want to move this item today, but I do want to move it with the direction because I think the idea of a holistic discussion is a really good one. And I know we're working on the general plan update, and it seems timely to really step back and look at all of the fees we charge, all of the costs. How long has it been since we've updated those fees? What are other jurisdictions doing around us? So that we can really have a conversation. Because I got to tell you, when that pool shut down in South Side Park, I heard from everybody. I heard from developers who had projects nearby. I heard from residents who were nearby. I heard from businesses nearby. What the heck's going on with this? So like, we have to recognize that there is both sides of this equation. We don't just want to build the housing. We also want to maintain communities that people want to live in and that they can thrive in. And there is a real cost benefit that we need to start to figure out. Are we really balancing those needs appropriately? Or do we need to step back and reevaluate and really think about and have a real conversation with the development community about what it's going to take to maintain the level of service in the community that we need for your developments to succeed, for people to want to buy those homes because they like the parks and the roads are well-maintained, and all of these things are happening, and they're not getting flooded every winter when we have a storm because the infrastructure is there to meet their needs. So that's my direction, as well as the ask from the Downtown Partnership around the report back. I think that makes sense to have a report back with a new fee. I think anytime we do something new, it makes just policy sense to have a report back. So with those two pieces of direction, I would like to open and close the public hearing. Thank you, Mindy, and move the item for approval.
And thank you. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor. I really want to thank you, Pravani, and staff. I voiced my concerns at Law &amp; Ledge. I appreciate you reaching out, and I do know at one Zoom meeting, I looked at you and said my answer is no, get me to yes. You got me to yes because of all the hard work. Doesn't mean there aren't things that I think Councilmember Valenzuela brought up that we need to look at in their totality. Because part of my looking at this from the get-go of being a no was, well, what about housing? We have an eight-year housing plan. How do we implement that? And by the way, I got a community underway, halfway built, 1,200 more units.
And by the way, I got a community underway, halfway built, 1,200 more units to go, that we need to make sure they continue building, because I know how long out people plan and financing and the millions of dollars that it takes in. But I'm also of mind that, you know, I'm new, and it, I think it's derelict of duty that we have waited this long to look at it. It's derelict of duty to not make an adjustment, but we can't put it out there to fix 20, 25, 30 years of what hasn't happened. So those are the, I appreciate looking at that. I did hear what Mr. Larson said, and I want to thank staff. I already asked for one continuance, and you gave that to me. So thank you. I will not be asking for another one tonight, but I do want to, if there is some unique issue we need to resolve, please come back. Also, with if there are other policy or minor things that come up from all of the individuals that have come up, so that we'd take it all at once to address everything, but we have, we can't say no. We can't say no to upgrading our infrastructure. We can't say no to upgrading to understand that we have almost two different sewer systems in Sacramento and how we are built in a floodplain, and we need to make sure that we have backup systems and water is working because Sacramento won't be Flint, Michigan. And if we don't invest and upgrade our infrastructure, that's a real possibility. So thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you for working so hard with interested parties, because this just didn't happen in the last month or two. This has been happening for months and months and months. So I look forward to more of the comprehensive discussion of our fees that Councilmember Valenzuela brought up, of feedback on anything else we need to fix, but I just want to say thank you to all of you in a very short amount of time negotiating and finding an agreement that I can say neither party is fully happy with. So that means it's actually a deal that we can move forward with.
That's right. All right. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. I might need Pravani back to the front if she's still here. Okay, I see her. I heard the date of 11/14/2023, and I heard it on the tail end of a conversation. So could you explain to me what the importance of that date?
So the storm drainage fee has to have a 30-day notification period. We published for notification last week. Oh, sorry. It's past for publication, PNP. We did that last week. So to allow for the 30-day timeframe, we have to come back to council on the 14th to actually approve the NEXIS study and the fee schedule. That gives us that 30-day timeframe.
So I think that that could work perfectly from the standpoint of, we have a customer who has a North Natomas project and a Delta Shores project, and they're concerned about getting dinged twice financially on the project, and they have a meeting with you or your staff on Thursday. And so I'm hopeful that that gives us enough time without putting another continuance in place, gives us enough time in order to be able to resolve that issue. Do you agree?
I would ask that this consent item, public hearing, not be moved to-
That's what he's suggesting, not, not that it be continued. Can you work out the problem between now and then?
Now, okay. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's why we have a meeting. I believe it's scheduled for Friday.
Thursday.
Okay.
From what I understand.
To have conversation and figure out what the issues are and what can be done.
Okay. And is there, I mean, does that possibility exist that they would be charged twice based on the current process?
No.
Okay. So that, that'll be discussed at that meeting. So that actually gives me a one-week or a two-week timeframe before you come back to us on the 14th of November for the final approval.
So the November 14th date is only for final approval of the storm drainage-
Okay.
-fee schedule and that NEXIS study. We're hoping to approve the water and the wastewater pieces today.
That presents a problem.
Well-
Especially if we're meeting with the customer on Thursday, and if this is approved, then they're, they're right in that they're being charged double.
But then I think, if I may, I think if it is worked out in a way that requires any kind of a change to the water fee, that, that staff would bring that change back. In other words, I think your original question still pertains, right? Which is that there is time, but we go ahead tonight so that it gets it, we put it in place. If there needs to be a change, it can be brought back on the 14th of November, and if there's still a dispute, any member of the council could ask that it be adjusted in that way, but I think the concern is to not delay the whole thing now for one project or two projects.
Yeah.
When there's room to, when there's time for that potentially to get worked out.
So Mayor, I don't know how many projects it would affect. I know of the one or two that I'm mentioning right now. There could be more, it could be less, but I want to make sure that the customer has their opportunity to speak with the Department of Utilities and has their, their time to be able to present their case. And if we approve this, as long as I'm, I know that it can be reversed on the November 14th meeting for their situation.
Well, it's not scheduled to be reheard on the 14th, but it could be. And so maybe the city manager and I-
Mayor, Mayor, can I just jump in a little bit? So Councilmember Jennings, one of the things I did ask is that we move this forward. There is time for issues to be addressed, and I've already discussed this with DOU staff, that if there is something that is specific that would address their concerns to make it clear that they're not going to be charged twice, that that can come back to council to amend already what's in place.
On the 14th?
On the 14th or whenever, you know, it takes, but, but we need to move forward on this tonight for certainty to start that 90-day for everybody to plant.
And I'll just add on that anything we bring back to this council for consideration that amends needs the sufficient noticing, the legal requirements, and so it just depends on what the changes are.
Right. So you can be assured, I think, Councilmember Jennings, you'll be on top of this. Councilmember Kaplan will be this Thursday meeting. We will be. And if there's something to bring back to the city council, we'll make sure that it is included in the November 14th action.
Perfect.
And I'll, I'll continue to keep council and mayor apprised of the progress we make through those meetings, so you're aware, and we can engage in additional discussion if that's needed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Couple, couple comments myself, if I may. So I think it is important for the public to understand, and I know certainly the development and business community understands, that under Proposition 13 in California for back, back 1978, that we do not have a tax or a fee system that allows us to spread the costs of development among the general population. There may be some limited exceptions to that in terms of a citywide or county-wide bond measure for infrastructure, but generally, this is the way development is funded. And yes, the costs do get passed on to the homeowner, and that's why this negotiation and this discussion and the delicate balance that the staff and the members and the business committee are trying to achieve is so important. Recognize, I mean, just to state the obvious, that raising a tax or a fee is not a virtue in and of itself, but it is a necessity sometimes if we are going to fund the infrastructure, in this case, to enable the kind of sustainable growth, infill, that we want to see more of here in the capital city. And so I, I, as I said at the very beginning, I support this because I think you have found the right balance and with the business community, and I again commend everybody on their good work. I want to add one thing. I, I think that this requires us, though, to think doubly hard about what additional incentives we can give for the kinds of development that we want to see. And we're already doing a lot of that, right? The zero-impact fees for affordable housing. And I know we have a challenging budget at this point, so I say the following with that in mind, but the council currently allocates about $3 million a year to essentially pay for the zero-impact fee. And so if it's possible, I would suggest that we ought to consider increasing that amount, especially since affordable housing has been stated consistently as a core city priority. But in addition to affordable housing, I know there have been requests from some to say, what about development along transit corridors? Hopefully, that's affordable, but along transit corridors. And what about the necessary task of converting office, given the change in the state and local workforce, office to residential? That's expensive, and we ought to be incentivizing that, whether it be through, and we ought to incentivize it financially where and when we can. So in terms of the next opportunity, at least for one-time money, to do, you know, one, one thing at a time, and I know what we, what we've talked about all day in terms of the budget, but I just want to state this as, as, as something that is important. The other thing is, we're, we're never done with the effort to streamline the kind of development that we want to see. And we know sometimes the disconnect between planning and the building department and some of the issues that we've had, great building department, but about the consistency of who the inspector is throughout the many chapters of, the many rounds of having to review, review plans. And I just think that this is an area that we need to continue to work on so that we're doing all we can to offset the impact of these fees by making it easier in other ways to develop what we want to see more of. It is a good move. Urgent I vote. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yeah, I just want to add to your point, because I had some very quick conversations last Tuesday when we thought this was coming up on Tuesday with some folks, especially the Downtown Partnership. And one thing I really appreciate about this fee, and I say that's because you brought up the point about adaptive reuse, is that it's really constructed in a way to incentivize density and adaptive reuse, because if the infrastructure is already there, you know, they can't charge you again, you know? And that's sort of like one of the basic premise of fees. If it's there, we're not going to say, hey, we're charging you for a pipe that exists. So I just want to say that I think to those concerns, especially as we talk about the next item and we're talking about density and the general plan and how do we do this, like, this is based on ground floor, essentially, level like acreage, not units. So it's really incentivized to say, hey, if you go up 10 stories, you're going to get charged the same as someone who's down two stories, because it's drainage, you know? And that doesn't necess, that's more based on footprint. So just wanted to say that, because I think it's one of the, another way that DOU has really innovated on the way they've structured this new fee, which is just pretty cool. Just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you. Do we want or need a roll call, or can I just say all in favor? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstain, that is an eight-to-nothing vote of the city council with vice mayor Gueda absent. Thank you. Great work. Appreciate it. And let's hear back informally on the meeting that takes place on Thursday to try to work that out. Thank you. Okay. Excellent. All right. As I said earlier, we are going to hear item 21 next with the police department, and then depending on the length, we'll go back to the missing middle report. I know. Well, we'll get to everything.
We have to do the staff switch real quick.
Let's mix it up. Let's mix up the issues a little here, you know? Okay.
Okay, I got my team coming in. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just want to say thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. We're here to present the violent crime reduction update from a year ago and the fiscal year 2324 Office of Violence Prevention Grant Program and Agreements. Joining me here tonight are members of our command staff, they're coming in right now, Dr. Nicole Clavo, who oversees our Office of Violence Prevention, representatives from numerous community-based organizations, and our federal strategic site liaison, Darnell Davenport, who came all the way from the East Coast for this meeting to join us tonight. He oversees our work on the Public Safety Partnership. So tonight, we're asking for council to, one, adopt a resolution authorizing an award of $3.2 million in Measure U resources allocated for the Gang Prevention and Intervention Task Force, the GPIT grant, and the Evidence-Based Community Violence Interruption, Disruption, and Suppression Grant, which is also known as the VIDS program. Also asking to execute nine GPIT grant agreements and five VIDS grant agreements for a combined total of $3.2 million with administrative fees, and three to extend the grant agreements for no more than two one-year periods. So essentially, this is a three-year grant period, the first year with an option to renew for the, the additional two years. And then we're also here because it's a great opportunity just to talk to you about what we've been doing for the last year in our violence reduction efforts, and part of which includes kind of why we're making the recommendations. So last year, if you remember, I came to you on June 14th, and we had a three-part presentation to talk about the state of violent crime and gun violence in our city. This followed the very, very tragic event of the 10th and K shooting. And I brought you the Major City Chiefs Association national totals at the time, because this was really alarming. Nationally, we saw between 2019 and 21, an increase of 30%, 36% in homicide, 13% in robbery and aggravated assaults, but it was much higher here in Sacramento. As you can see, we had a 70 and a half percent increase in homicide between 2019 and 21. We went down a little bit in robbery compared to the rest of the nation, but we're, you know, much higher in aggravated assaults. And if you take a look at those numbers, you'll see this very significant upward trend in homicide and aggravated assaults between 2019 and 21. In addition, during that period of time, we saw a 25% increase in shooting reports, 17% rise in the number of people shot in our city, and a 34% increase in the total number of guns seized. And I brought some historical crime stats in because, you know, the pandemic affected us in many ways, and we all know that we saw a pretty huge spike of violence nationally. And if you look, you see that we really trended up between 2018 and 2019, and even into 2022, when we were implementing this plan, we continue to see those increases. The FBI just came out with their national statistics last week, and so when they compared 2022 to 2021, nationally, we saw a decrease of only about 1.7% in violent crime, 6% in murder, 5% in rape, just over 1% in aggravated assault, and actually an increase in robbery. And this is, this is what I'm really very pleased and excited to bring you today, our today's numbers. So as you know, when we presented our violent crime strategy in June, we had already begun some implementation, but really expanded those efforts dramatically after that. By the fall of last year, we were partnering with our community-based organizations, we made changes to our investigative and operational units, and we refined our analysis of data. We also applied for, and we were ultimately one of the six cities nationally selected by the U.S. Department of Justice to be a Public Safety Partnership location. This is a grant for technical assistance that was awarded last October, and we'll be discussing that briefly tonight. And so as you can see, we are trending significantly lower on violent crime year-to-date in 2023 than we did in 2022. We have seen reductions in all categories. When we compare '22 to '23 year-to-date, we have seen a 40% reduction in homicide and rape, a 6% reduction in robbery, and a 22% reduction in aggravated assaults. And so while we do see a reduction in robbery, you know, keep in mind that our numbers were higher in 2022, so that's a reduction, but we have some work to do there. But we have also seen what I think is really important to share that's not reflected in these numbers in shootings, is that we've seen a 32% decrease last year in the number of people that were victims of gun violence and shot in our city. So translated to numbers, at the end of the year in 2021, we had 256 people that were affected directly by gun violence, and in 2022, we had 175 people. Now, that's still far too many, but that means we had 81 less people last year that were suffering from the direct effects of gun violence. And I just, you know, I have to just take a moment to say a big thank you. When we came to you, we talked about how important it was to do this as a collaboration. The police department and law enforcement, the city, our community-based organizations, we really can't do it alone, but you guys took a chance on our plan and gave us the support and the funding to do this. And I just want to give a big shout-out to the men and women of our department that have worked tirelessly to really take a look at what we do. You know, we're, we have staffing challenges, we have- And I would like to recognize, if you're here as one of our community-based organizations, would you mind standing, please?
Please.
Thank you. I just had to recognize them because they're like our silent heroes. You know, my friend Greg King, we were talking, you know, he's somebody I've worked with for 25 or 30 years, and he says, you know, we are all public safety. And so I think that this really shows the importance of that collaboration, when we work together, how effective we can really be. So overall, we have seen an 18.2% reduction in these crimes between 22 and 23. So I think that's just wonderful. And with that, I'm going to talk about public safety efforts. We're also going to talk about PSP, and then a lot of the community outreach that we did. And Dr. Clavo will be talking about our new grant program. So for our public safety collaboration, you know, we talked about kind of where we wanted to go prior to getting the PSP grant. We established regional working and intelligence groups where we shared information. We expanded partnerships with our federal partners, including adding some additional officers to our federal task forces and joining a firearms trafficking strike force. We really looked at opportunities and technology, especially in NIBIN entry and tracing, and just, you know, trying to build on the relationships that we could better identify the people and places that were contributing to violence in our city. We also did some community outreach because we really want to hear from the community, especially in our focus areas. And I know you'll remember that we see a significant and a disproportionate amount of crime in small geographic areas of our city, Del Paso Heights, Meadowview, Valley High, and Oak Park. And so we partnered with the Institute for Social Research at Sac State to conduct a neighborhood survey on gun violence in the fall of 22. And with volunteers and Sac PD staff, we placed about 19,000 door hangers within those three focus areas on February 25th. The flyers were in English and Spanish. They included an anonymous QR code that people could take the survey with, or they also had an opportunity to complete the survey over the phone with an ISR staff member. And that survey was open until May 27th. Overall, 1,709 residents within the city responded to the survey, and a large portion of the residents lived in the city for more than 10 years in their neighborhoods. The results were that there was an overall perception from residents, there has been more crime in their areas. But most residents really felt also like they were very much connected with their neighbors, and they trusted them. That's a great community strength that we have. We asked about people's experience with gun violence. Overall, about 10% of respondents said they'd been a victim of gun violence, but 25% had a close family member or friend that had been a victim. And close to half of the residents in those specific areas felt that gun violence was a major problem in their area. When we asked about their experience with the police, they most commonly said their interactions were either being a witness to a crime and being questioned by police, reporting a crime, or being pulled over. Most residents knew really little to nothing about efforts being made to reduce gun violence in their neighborhood. For the residents' priorities, we asked them really what they felt would be a priority to help drive down violence. They talked about direct patrols and some things that are certainly outside the purview of the Police Department, neighborhood cleanups, more community services, and then also being very specific as to what they wanted with their interactions with police, prom-oriented policing and community-oriented policing, high-visibility policing, and many were interested in Neighborhood Watch. We also conducted listening sessions, and while the results were consistent regarding the recommendations, you know, some of the perceptions were a little bit different. So there were three listening sessions with adults that encompassed 83 adult residents, and we had one with 24 youth, and they were facilitated by our community facilitators. So initially, data was shared with the participants to identify and explain the concentrated violence that we have seen, and then community facilitators guided those conversations to talk about neighborhood experience with gun violence, current access to guns, specific policing strategies that they thought would be most helpful to reduce gun violence amongst other things. So when this group was asked about their experience with gun violence, they reported greater impacts from gun violence than we saw in the survey. So in this case, over two-thirds versus about a quarter had a family member or friend who had been a victim of gun violence, and the majority, 71%, versus only about half of our, our door hanger survey, reported that gun violence was a major problem in their neighborhood. We also found that adults and youth perceive gun violence differently despite living in the same neighborhoods. Only about 17% of our youth said that gun violence was a major problem in their neighborhood. But during the youth listening sessions, you know, participants really had mixed feedback about the extent to which gun violence impacts their everyday lives. Some shared that gun violence in their neighborhoods made them feel unsafe, but for other youth, the impact of gun violence appeared to be normalized to a certain extent. When asked to identify the causes of gun violence, the participants pointed towards people wanting to ensure their personal safety, media and music driving violence, social media influences amongst youth, lack of neighborhood supports for youth, and access to firearms. We also asked about neighborhood safety and connectedness and found the majority of people found it difficult to identify safe places in their neighborhoods. Some of the comments were that while there are some spaces, they have limited availability, they're only available to youth on limited schedules or are no longer functional or open, and that came up repeatedly throughout the surveys. When we asked about reducing violence, they had strategies that were most commonly recommended, which included more youth and young adult activities, behavior intervention programs, community meetings and events, and neighborhood cleanup and Neighborhood Watch programs. Again, they also pointed to high-visibility policing, more police officers in their area, and a crime hotline. And then finally, the focus area residents also discussed ways to develop a positive relationship with the Police Department and emphasized the need for officers to get to know their residents and develop, you know, understanding and empathy with the neighborhood. So in the in sum, the feedback from the survey and the listening sessions was fairly consistent, talking about preventing gun violence with community resources and supports for youth, and then really building trust through engagement and community-oriented policing. And then our next kind of big topic to discuss is the National Public Safety Partnership Grant. We applied for this grant prior to coming to council in June, mentioned that we were in the application process, and then we rewarded this in October of 2022. This is a technical assistance grant. There's not funding associated with this, but it's a three-year commitment from the federal government to work collaboratively with our department to reduce violent crime. We've had a couple of members on command staff on our department that have really taken this on and have led these efforts. They are meeting weekly. They are looking at different ways to analyze crime, different ways for us to make sure that we understand where crime is occurring and the best ways to address it, and really taking this forward. We are also working on several assessments, which is part of the technical assistance program, and conducting peer exchanges with other PSP sites. And with that, because I am certainly not the expert, I have a really great person that's going to speak on this, Mr. Darnell Davenport, who is our PSP site liaison. And I'd just like to invite him up so he could share what PSP is and how important it is for our city.
Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Let me tell you something. This is an exciting day for me. I think PSP has really impacted this city. Anytime you see a reduction in homicides, those are real numbers. That means that people's lives are being saved. When less people are being shot, we're doing something right. So PSP, for me, I take it personally because I've been a victim of crime, I've extensive years in the Police Department. I was a police captain with LAPD after, I stayed there about 31 years, and then I went to Alabama, and I was an assistant chief and a deputy chief. So when you talk about crime, it's had a real impact in my life and my family's life. Let me tell you a little bit about the purpose of PSP, and I think I'm going to go to, okay, this has already been changed for me. The chief has actually did a good job giving you an overview, but what PSP does is it's a strategic, a strategic focus to support communities that struggle with violent crime far in excess of the national average. And it's a belief that a city would benefit from DOJ support in developing their own capabilities. Often, what we find in police departments across the nation is that they have high crime, and part of the problem is they don't know how to combat the crime. They're not using what we would call the best practices, our fresh practices, and they have, some extent, they're not using police science. That's kind of the old technology, or the old terminology that we use. PSP is designed to do a couple of things, provide federal support. The Department of Justice connects the federal law enforcement, the U.S. Attorney, and what we call the site team, and that's who I am. And they provide technical training assistance. So one of the things that we look at, and I'm going to start moving this slide thing around a little bit, is one of the things that we looked at, and I'm going to move it a little more, in Sacramento, for example, we look at, we did assessments, and we did four assessments, or we're going to do four assessments, we've done three. When we look at the crime analysis, what we found is that they probably didn't have enough folks working the unit to effectively do crime analysis. The other issue is that some of the skills that they had were not up to date, and they were antiquated. And so what we try to do in PSP is give them the skills so that they can improve their ability to fight crime. And if they improve their ability to fight crimes in terms of daily missions, identifying trends, clusters, then they can put the right resources to remit the crime in those certain locations. Another thing is that we looked at, we did a grant review, and what we found is that the department could use more people working in the grant unit to go after other funds that the city can't provide to provide better resources for the city to fight crime. Next month, we're going to be looking at technology, and then next year, we're also going to be doing a prosecution assessment. And so these assessments really help us to develop a baseline understanding of the challenges in the areas of potential growth. The assessments findings are used to develop a strategic plan to address the violent crime and the site priorities. And so with those things, those are very small things, but when you have a city that has significant crime, small changes make a significant difference in reducing the number of incidents you have. And that's why when you look at this city, and we've been doing this about a year, you're seeing significant reductions in violent crime, and I anticipate that next year, you're going to also see significant reductions in violent crime. I'm kind of moving around some of these slides because I don't want to go into too many details. When we looked at the, one of the things that we do is we develop a framework in which we operate in. And so this framework, we always have to ask ourselves, is it working? If we're seeing crime going up, the framework probably isn't working, but if we see crime going down, the framework is probably working. And we kind of look at three things when we start looking at crime. We look at timely and accurate information. We look at rapid deployment of resources. We looked at effective tactics, and we look at relentless follow-up on the issue. And so often, police departments have crimes that's occurring, they're unaware that the crime's occurring because their crime analysis unit is not effectively trained to track the crime, to identify patterns, and to identify suspects that are involved in that crime. And so what we did in Sacramento, we developed what we call an internal working group. So every month, this internal working group meets, and that's just Sacramento police officers and their leadership. And we talk about internal and external crime fighting strategies. And so internal crime fighting strategies may be those strategies just at the Police Department insomniac by itself. External crime fighting strategies are those kind of strategies that they implement using the federal resources. And so one of the things that you have to understand with fighting crime, the Police Department cannot be effective by itself. It has to have collaboration. Part of that collaboration would be the CBOs, but the other part of that collaboration are the federal partners. The federal partners bring a lot of tools and data and resources that many police departments don't effectively use. And by being a part of PSP, we make them aware of those resources, we have combined meetings so that they then can access some of those resources. Sacramento Police Department Crime Control Meetings. And so we looked at that, and one of the things that, when you look at crime, you have to almost have a daily meeting discussing crime for the last 24 hours. You almost have to have a weekly meeting and a monthly meeting. And the reason that you have daily and weekly meetings is that today you have a robbery. If you don't have the meeting, you might not know that you had the robbery if you don't have the meeting until two weeks from now. Tomorrow, you have another robbery, and then the third day, you have another robbery. And guess what's starting to occur? You're getting a trend, you're getting a pattern that's going on. And if you're not meeting, talking about crime on a daily basis, your ability to respond is too late. Now you're three robberies down, but if you had responded, if you saw the robbery the first day, it gave you now an opportunity to go after that suspect because there may have been a description of that suspect. Some of the things that when we looked at in the crime analysis unit, some of the things that they were doing probably was not, it was important, but those things maybe could have, there might have been administrative in nature, and part of it is helping them to develop some automated systems so that they don't spend a significant amount of their time really doing things that are not traditional police work in terms of fighting crime. Upcoming training and technical training required. So part of what I'm trying to say there is that there's a lot of training across the country that we were sending Sacramento PT to now, and that training has really given them the skill sets, are building their toolbox so that they can effectively fight crime. I think the chief already talked about how the department has been reorganized, and one of the things that we're looking at is accountability. So we did bring the federal partners in, but often sometime you bring the federal partners in, and you often ask, what did they do? So every month when we meet, we talk about what they did for the last 30 days, and so that's that accountability function. One of the things that we're looking at is deterrent model implementation, and this is really to deal with people that have had a history of violence in the city. The city is looking at implementing that. Tactical crime fighting strategies, I've kind of went over that, and then federal resources that are required. I think we talked about that. One of the things we also have is the U.S. Attorneys involved. So now, in the past, where the city was not getting federal prosecutions, the city is getting federal prosecutions on crime. And so I think that removing some bad actors from the city will have a significant impact on crime over time. Okay. I really don't have anything more to say than that, but I will tell you, I am very impressed with this city's ability to engage in PSP. I think the crime numbers speak for themselves. I think the collaboration is the key to law enforcement. If police departments think they're going to do it by themselves, they're not going to be successful. They need their CBOs, they need federal partners, and they need other partners involved to fight crime. Not only do they need partners, they need skills. And so what we're able to bring to the Sacramento Police Department, we're able to do assessments, determine what their skill levels are, and then once those, once we determine those baseline skill levels, then we can determine what's the appropriate strategies or recommendations to get that, those skill levels to increase.
So I want to thank you. I know you flew from where?
Atlanta.
From Atlanta. Well, thank you, first of all, thank you for coming to present to the council tonight. I know that this partnership has so much value. I mean, just in terms of the resources that the partnership is providing for strategic and technical assistance for all that you've said, and I also know that it means that we're going to be that much more competitive when it comes to additional federal grants for different prevention and early intervention, crime prevention techniques. And so I'm really glad to have you here. We're really glad to have you here, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Let us hear from Chief Lester.
Thank you.
Let's wrap, let's wrap up if we can, and then we will move to the public testimony.
Okay, just real quick, let me scan through this. So we talked about our crime prevention strategy, people, places, behaviors, and the outreach that we've been doing. Just to highlight a couple of things, you know, very quickly, sorry, I lost my place here. So we're working on strategic intelligence directed enforcement, and for example, we did a five-week operation in downtown between August and September on the weekends that resulted in 10 narcotic bywalks, six arrests for narcotic sales, and several arrests for firearms possessions and assaults. to highlight a couple of things, you know, very quickly. Sorry, I lost my place here. So we're working on strategic intelligence directed enforcement. And for example, we did a five-week operation in downtown between August and September on the weekends that resulted in 10 narcotic bywalks, six arrests for narcotic sales, and several arrests for firearms possessions and assaults. We're currently working with the commands to address narcotics sales in our city under the model. And this past month, we conducted two undercover operations that resulted in five felony arrests, all of which have been filed by the district attorney. Also, working on very focused enforcement and warrant operations. We recently conducted a multi-day operation, where identified 25 individuals that had felony warrants, both state and federal, and had ties or were associated with Sacramento, and they were all taken into custody. And with our federal and regional partners, we continue to investigate large and complex cases involving narcotics and firearms with ties to Sacramento. For example, two cases this year resulted in, one was one firearm, 33 pounds of methamphetamine, five pounds of heroin, and three pounds of cocaine. Another case was 450,000 fentanyl pills, $80,000 in cash, and 17 firearms. They are all being prosecuted through the U.S. Attorney's Office. Niibin, this is just talking about our technology. It's the National Integrated Ballistics Information Network, and we're getting casings and projectiles entered into that system quickly and maximizing the use of technology. What's really important about this is this is able, we're able to tie cases together that we would not know about. For example, an arrest was made of a subject with an assault weapon. It was test-fired, and it was linked to seven different cases in '22 and '23. And based on other investigatory tools, we were able to hold that person responsible for four of those shootings. We also had a shooting here in Sacramento. We processed casings, and we linked to a shooting out of state. The agency was contacted. They had a suspect, and with our information, we're able to tie that suspect to the shooting. For the Office of Violence Prevention, real quick, I'm just going to talk about this year's programming in the '22-'23 grants. The first is the grant from 2022, which is the GPIT grant. That's an award funding community-based organizations to deliver prevention and intervention services to curb violence. In 2022 and '23, GPIT agencies or CBOs support 756 youth and adult participants across almost 200,000 hours of programming. More than half of those individuals that participated were at high risk for gang involvement. They also provided direct services to adults that were in support roles, which included 471 adults receiving 20,000 hours of training and service hours. And additionally, 205 individuals were part of that program that were provided indirect services or information or one-time referrals and support. The second program was the one that we really expanded on. This is the VIDS program. Again, it's to improve community health and safety by providing violence interruption, disruption, suppression, and services to high-risk youth who are disproportionately impacted by violence. This grant served youth in Del Paso Heights, McRoe and Meadowview, and Oak Park. The evaluation by SCOE showed that our CBOs provided emergency critical incident response 71 times over the grant period, including 19 responses to eight different police department requests for support. We reported that they responded to their requests within one hour of notification 100% of the time, provided effective support, and maintained very productive conversations and communications with law enforcement. They also provided the drip response, disruption response, and interruption and prevention 93 times, which far exceeded our target goal of 54. In all, 89 unique events were staffed by CBOs that were really working to prevent violence in the city. They held community intervention discussions in four areas of the city. 206 discussions total were held, and the count at these community discussions was 3,910. It's not a unique count because many attended multiple events, but it's still a very large number. And on the referrals, referrals of at-risk individuals where we were requesting intensive individualized support was provided to 191 unique participants that exceeded our target number of 160. And then finally, we had 140, I'm sorry, the individuals receiving support had a number of high-risk factors. 140 were high-risk due to affiliate influences. 86 had a history of violent crime. 64 had a history of gun violence, and 82 were gang affiliated. I do have some success stories, but I will, I think that we've got some speakers, so I will skip those, and I can certainly provide those. But just know, they've done some amazing work in our community by really intervening and being very responsive. And so, you know, I will let them tell their stories, but very much in support of the work that they do. So with that, I will turn this over to Dr. Nicole Clavo, who will talk about the '23-'24 awards and the three-year grant program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. The '23-'24 grant period, so Chief went over and kind of briefly explained to you the difference in the two grants that we had this year. And so when the council awarded us the GPIT grant, which is the grant that pretty much established this office, which is Gang Prevention Intervention Task Force, that grant is more of the long-term gang prevention and intervention. So they work with some of our younger youth. They do, they're in our schools, they're in our middle schools, they're in our high schools, they're in our community centers and things of that nature. And so when we held our seminar for both of the grants, the evidence-based community violence intervention disruption, suppression grant, and the GPIT grant, we were very specific in the requirements of these grants. With both grants, we asked that you have a minimum of one-year experience in doing this work, and that you not only write well, but you actually are doing the work in the community. And so with that, we had 25 applicants. We had 25 applicants for the GPIT grant, and we funded nine. With the VIDS grants, we had 10, and we funded five. Get to that chart. So the chart that you have in front of you is the GPIT Task Force Grant. And these are the organizations in which we funded. The funding that you are seeing, we projected out to '25-'26. Of course, that is a guesstimate of funding. If we were to be funding be available for '24-'25, '25-'26. So what we did was, we took the amount that they were awarded and took it over for the next three years, over the three-year period. And then with the evidence-based community violence interruption, the EBSIVITs, the VIDS short grant, we did the same thing. We, those five organizations. The difference, I want to go back and say the difference. With evidence-based, this is really with this VIDS grant, this is real serious work. These individuals are working with some of the hardest-to-serve individuals. These are gun-toting that we know for fact. Through our CBO referral program with PD, we sit with these individuals every other, every two Thursdays to three Thursdays, and we go over gun referral cases, which each of these CBOs listed. And so the cases are referred to these CBOs. These CBOs make cold calls, they show up at court, they show up at county jail, as well as probation or juvenile hall. So these individuals are, they are targeting those that we know for fact are gang members, those that we know for fact that have guns in our hands. So it's really a unique group of individuals that are doing this work. And so it's really hard to just give this grant out to anyone, because everyone is not doing this work. And it's one of those areas where we have individuals who apply for funding because they don't quite understand what it is we're looking for. And so it's really hard to pinpoint those groups that are best doing this work. The third chart is with our additional million dollars, in which we don't know if this will be funded in the coming years, because this was a one-time funding by the council. And so what you see on this chart, you have SCOE. SCOE, you see, they evaluate both grants. So we give two evaluators $50,000 for the year to work with the CBOs. They're hands-on with the CBOs. They collect all of the data that the CBOs have. That means all of, all metrics that are required, how many, how many individuals are they actually meeting with? What, what are they doing with these individuals? How many times a week, month, or year are they meeting with these individuals? And so they track all of the data for us, and then, and put it into, they give us a quarterly graph. So I get a mid-year, and then I get an end-of-the-year chart that brings all of the documentation together. You also see on here the GPIT extension and the VIDS extension. That was the July through September, because we were behind in getting our RFPs out. So we extended the current grantees from '21, from '22-'23 grant season, and we extended them three years. So that is where you see the 449999 would be the total for that. What we are hoping in this grant cycle to begin is CBO training and development. And we have been doing capacity building with our grantees over the past year or more. And it's really turned out to be well. They're learning how to do their finances, they're learning how to keep their books better. And we've been, myself and my two staff, have been meeting with them hours on hours to try to get them up to par. And so with the CBO training and development, we hope to be able to provide training from someone from the outside to come in, sit with each one of our CBOs, and help them develop not only their finances, but of course, their organizations overall. The community sponsorships is something that we've been doing prior to me coming in. And that's just small sponsorships that we give out to different programs that are doing great work in our community, but may not have ever applied for a grant, or may, and may just need a few thousand dollars to help them on their way to do a wonderful event for our youth and our young adults in our community. The VIDS grant funding, because we didn't have enough applicants to apply for that grant, we have $80,000 that we will use moving forward to fund programs that may come forward that are doing good work, that we're learning about on the way. Also, to, we may be able to give some of the programs that got less money, some of that funding, and/or move that money into a smaller grant RFP. And so with that, that is how the funding was broke down. That is our goals and plans. Hopefully, moving into the next two years, that we will be able to see this money. Be this million dollars is available in the next two years, you will see where the total of the 449 will be used to go out in RFPs. And so that would be the two extensions, the 449999 would be the two extensions, and the $80,000 that we have in residual.
Thank you, Dr. Clavo. And that would not have been possible really without the assistance of Sutter Health. I'd like to recognize them, because they provided a lot of the services that, for free, as far as our grant reporting, and that allowed us to really maximize the grant funding and give it back to the community. So really appreciate their efforts. So what we're going to continue to do, Dr. Nicole Clavo essentially became a police manager, and she is pretty much on-call 24/7. There's a great network of communication between our CBOs and our commanders. It's been a wonderful relationship that we will expand on. And just to kind of give you an idea of the work that will continue, one of our CBOs had a report over at Golden One. We had a bunch of kids that were congregating, they got a video, identified one of those kids as a missing teen, and were able to contact them, contact him, reunite him with his family, and have offered their services. We had another individual that was through referral to one of our CBOs, was really struggling, but they mentored him throughout the year. He was able to graduate from high school and was just accepted at Chico State University. We had an organization place eight individuals with a history of significant gang involvement into an eight-week construction training course. We also had an organization that was notified by a concerned community member about a concert that was going to be held, and felt that it was going to be problematic. And seeing the potential for violence, that group reached out to the organizers. They were able to move that concert with their cooperation to a neutral location, and the concert was held. There were no incidents. And then we had four participants of a partnership with one of our CBOs gain employment. And this CBO was able to leverage their extensive connections with Grant High School to staff and maintain an effective presence at school offense and mediate conflicts. So moving into '23 and '24, that type of work is what we're going to continue to do. We will work on completing our grant and technology, federal assessments, refining our efforts, certainly continuing the narcotics enforcement, growing our CBO partnership. And we're working with PSP to find a research to evaluate the effectiveness of this strategy long-term. We realize it's only been a year. And we're working with the California Partnership for Safe Communities to evaluate and research non-fatal shootings to see how we can prevent those further. And we will also be working to publish the data that we've discussed here for public, you know, viewing and consumption. So thank you very much, Mayor and Council. With that, I will turn it over for any questions or comments.
Thank you very much, Chief, and to your team, and Dr. Clavo, and everyone. Again, thank you for traveling from Atlanta. We appreciate that. Let's hear the public testimony, then we'll turn it over to the City Council.
Thank you, Mayor. I have eight speakers. The first is Prentice Wilson, Jason Dillard, then McWorthy. I'll read out a few more names. Prentice, Jason Dillard, McWorthy, Chris Palomo, then Derek Suggs.
Good evening, Council. Obviously, my name is Prentice Wilson. I'm with Academics for Athletes. Good to see my city member and my neighborhood. So one of the things that I'm, you can't argue with.
I'm good.
You're good.
Start the two minutes over, please.
The main thing that I wanted to talk about, there's a lot of things that, you know, we obviously know that data is data, and data doesn't lie, but there's some things that just don't show up in the data. One of the things that, as a community-based organization that I was so proud of, and this happened a couple of weeks ago, through this program and through the program moving underneath the police department, was we had a challenge at Natomas High, I mean, at Endercombe High School earlier, a couple of weeks ago. One of the things that happened is through this program, we were called from District Two to assist. And there was a time when it always looked like it was the Natomas area coming to help us. So for us to be able to go with those high school kids through this program, and speaking with Councilmember Talamontes over the years, and sometimes we say we're Del Paso Heights, Strawberry Manor, Oak Park, these are highly impacted areas, and this is where the funding should go and does go. We don't see the effects of the funding going there, but that funding also assisting with the other areas. Yet, we always talk about collaboration and working together. And I can honestly say, without Dr. Clavo sitting us in rooms and saying, what are we doing together? What are we doing for each other? That's what this is designed for. I don't know if it would have gone that way. That's number one. The other thing is, our organization applied before for more funds, and it was Dr. Clavo that basically sat us down at that time and said, you're not ready. You're not, you know, when we didn't, we wanted to know why. Why didn't we get this? Why didn't we get that? And it was clear, you guys are not ready. And we went out there, we kind of proved that point, but we were held so accountable, even moving, like I said, moving them underneath the police department, they said it really nicely, that we're being taught what to do. That's really, really nice, to say it that way. But I just wanted to thank her, thank Chief, thank you guys, because those are some of the things that I don't think you guys actually see the collaboration that's going on with areas that we don't think are highly impacted by these funds. So thank you.
Thank you, Prentice.
Thank you for your comment. Jason Dillard, then McWorthy.
All right. Good evening to Mr. Mayor and to the City Council. Thank you for your continued support. Mr. Mayor has always been gracious enough to support us during our annual Gang Intervention and Prevention summits at Grant High School. My name, for those who don't know, is Jason Dillard. I'm with Academics for Athletes. I would like to thank Chief Lester and her staff, as well as Dr. Nicole Clavo, for the excellent training, like my partner said. excellent training, like my partner said, Donard Wilson. One thing, okay, is the clock going? Okay, all right, here we go. Because I don't plan on being up here too much longer, but. But I do want to say that without resources, gang intervention and prevention is just words. And so with the right resources, we can work to implement the kind of positive change we would like to see. You know, our youth have two choices. They can either try to make it, or they're going to fight to take it. And we know that trying to take it doesn't lead us in the direction that we want to go in. But in order to feel like you can make it, you got to have hope. And so the resources that you all authorize for the Office of Gang, I mean, Violence Prevention to provide us allows us to give more youth hope that they can make it and be on the right side of things. So thank you for your continued support, and God bless you.
Could you put this up on it for you?
Yeah, go ahead and get started, then I can put it up.
Okay, people. First of all, now, Chief, it was capsized, you can't straighten it out. To prevent crime, you employ people. Now, how many people here can show that they worked against drugs? Now, neighborhood associations is part of your voting folks that you give grants to, your funds to vote for you. And I'm on track to expose some of those people that's out there, say, neighborhood organizations. Now, when you say you go in and teach these people, you go in and do the investigation. I'd like to get a good detective in here to do some investigation on those people that you have, or neighborhood association. You will find that those families are linked to drugs. Why is it a young man get a grant? What is he doing with it? Neighborhood associations? No. You're going to wind up here, sign the same thing with Afghanistan. Snitching on the neighborhood, they will bust a cap. Trust pass against me, I bust a trap. Cap, my family. Now, right in Oak Park, I live in Oak Park. I paid this interest. Who asked? I gave work program to kid at the high. I trained people at, for grant security for janitorial business. I got a relative twenty-seven years in Sacramento, but I got on the internet, he started a janitorial service. People, wake up. Wake up, people. Brother, I would say, go back to Atlanta. You're in the wrong place. Now, we know that some of the people here, you always say, "To perpetuate the police department," that's all that is. You know, "Show what I have done to solve crime." Nothing, and you know that. That's perpetuate the police department. Training, you got to give the training, not from somebody walking around.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Chris Palumbo, then Derek Suggs, then Jay Eldon.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I am here representing All In Together. We are a nonprofit organization that caters to youth mentorship and health, mental health. So we're here trying to make sure the kids stay on the right track, keep them away from gangs, mentor them in the right capacity and mindset, show, teach them things other than sports, life skills as far as working with their hands. We also mentor younger ladies as well. We have, we have about five, five ladies that help us out as well. What else? We, we appreciate you guys and all your guys' effort for backing us and supporting us. We're trying to do the best we can, going to neighborhoods, every neighborhood, from north, south, east, to west, trying to get all these kids to understand that they matter, that they have a future, and the streets is not a way, a way to turn. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Derek Suggs, then Jay Eldon. Derek Suggs, Jay Eldon, O, then Celisa Campos.
Thank you, everyone, for having me. How you doing, Mr. Jennings? I'm with Hope, but I work with All In Together, Brother to Brother, the Jackie Rose Family Foundation, I'm Ms. Maple. We work with everybody, but it's like, it's a 24-hour job. We don't never, we're never off the clock. It's whenever we, the phone ring, we got to pick up. It's whether it's a parent, the Sacramento Police Department, it doesn't matter. It could be a school official, somebody called, we're getting up. We're going in schools, like I said, we go everywhere. We provide job opportunities, we help get their licenses, we're sending kids back to school, we're sending adults that dropped out of school back to school. Whatever, wherever the need is, we try to fill that because it often doesn't happen where we come from. So we just try to do better for our people. The resources is very important because without it, we can't be as impactful with the community. It allows us to do a lot of great things, like be involved with the JDP program where we take the youth to the prison and they talk to the lifers, and they tell them about their life stories, and like, it makes a difference, like, to be able to do these different things. Just, I just want to thank you guys, though, for allowing us to have this opportunity.
Thank you for your comments. Jay Eldon. Following Jay is O, then Celisa Campos.
Hi. I didn't come in planning to speak on this, but whenever I see the Chief Lester talking about funding and things like that, I have to come up and say something. The police do have a lot of funding, and they haven't really showed up to the Police Review Commission, which is a space that was created to help guide, give police guidance on how they proceed. So I just, my one thing I want to add is just that the police step up to the, those conversations more.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is O, and then Celisa.
Mindy, if you want to.
Go ahead and get started, then I can pull it up.
Thank you. It's just the video. I ain't got nothing else to say.
Says she was driving on Business 80 when she noticed a Sacramento police officer behind her.
I kept this, the same speed, you know, just driving normally. I noticed that he turned on his lights. So then I moved over to the left, thinking, oh, you know what? Since now I see more cop cars behind him, I'm just going to get out of their way, let them go past. Maybe they have somewhere to go.
Then she says she realized there was a helicopter above.
I looked in the rearview mirror, and that's when I noticed that the, the police officers had their guns out. They had them aimed towards the car, so I listened to their instructions to toss my keys out the window, open my door with my left hand, and get out slowly with my hands in the air. I just followed instructions, but I also told him, "Just stay in the car."
She says ultimately, officers told her they've made a mistake.
And they did tell me that he fit the description of a suspect that they've been watching for two years. His hair texture, his white shirt, which he had on his practice gear. And I'm like, really? My eight-year-old baby fit the description of a suspect you were looking for? You know, it just didn't make sense to me.
Sacramento police declined an interview Thursday, but say they're investigating what happened and reviewing body camera video from its officers. But the stress of the situation was too much, Stewart says, at nine months pregnant.
I'm still worried. I'm still scared.
She knows this will take time for her son to recover from, and wants a formal apology from the department about the ordeal, but believes even that won't undo what they've gone through.
What kid wants to live in fear of a police officer possibly stopping him in the future and doing something to him? Now, it's like, is this going to happen every time the police approach me? You know, is this how they deal with young children, young men, young, you know, minorities?
I'll be back.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Celisa Campos.
I just want to reiterate also that they, that they don't show up to the Police Commission. And when they hold the community meetings, they don't inform the community, they ensure that there's very little participation, and then they manipulate people into thinking, and in this instance, that they, the police are the only resource to be able to get these resources. The police didn't do anything. Everything we heard was from community members and community groups that are stuck getting their funding from these costs. So here's this. I don't have anything to say either. Oh, hold on, hold on.
Officers grabbing a young girl and placing handcuffs after she opened the door. You can hear an officer ask, "Who else is there?" The ten-year-old in tears. The video hard to watch for many.
I wish I could say shock. Unfortunately, Sacramento has a history of being very.
Reason department can.
You guys are so lucky. I, I will encourage you all to look up the video of the police handcuffing a ten-year-old girl in her home who was crying and saying she was just a baby when the police were there and they handcuffed her and told her she was not a baby and dragged her out of her home in her pajamas. These people are not competent. They are not viable for our community. I encourage all of you to try to work together without them. They are useless and have been proven again and again incompetent, and the only way they can do good is with the help, with the community. They are incompetent. When you have people coming to train them to do the job that the community knows how to do, I don't understand what their use is. It is unfortunate that they're asking for money to surveil people, and they are using the community to get that. This, this is detrimental, and it is wrong. There are other ways to do it, and you guys have funding that you could give the community over and over and over and choose not to. The police do not help us. You guys help yourselves. I want you to remember that. All of the work that is being done is by the community members, and you guys are making the change, not fucking copy fucking Lester.
Mayor, I have no more speakers on this agenda item.
Well, then I'll turn it over to the City Council members. I'll start with Councilmember Maple.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I just really want to, I'll be brief because I know we have a pretty, pretty packed agenda tonight, but I just really wanted to thank Dr. Clavo for all your work on this, Chief Lester as well, and there's, there's, there's too many names to name, but I did want to point out a few people that, just in my own personal experience and the short time that I've been doing this, are out on the ground every day. I see Ms. Jackie Rose in the crowd, crowd here, Ms. Nikki Whiteside, Daniel Silva, Dietrich, of course, in the back, Bill Knowlton, and then Mervyn Brookins. And, and those are just a few of the names of people who are out doing this work every single day. They're working in our communities, and some of the, what wasn't mentioned during the presentation is, they're not only fielding calls from, from you, they're fielding calls from us, right? And from our community members, and everything from, you know, we have, you know, youth that are in need of, of services or of just some guidance to, "I don't know what to do." And, and, and they show up. And so I think that that's, it's an invaluable resource to our community, and I'm going to continue to fight for more funding for this, as we did in the last budget. We're going to keep making asks because I think that this is, this is public safety, right? When we invest in our communities, we have the people who are out there every single day, that they have the relationships, they're, they're keeping those relationships with our youth, they're making sure that young people have things to do, and that they understand their worth and, and that they know that we're there for them. And so this is just the tip of the iceberg, and I'm just really grateful for all the work that you do in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela, then Jennings.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to say, I mean, these numbers are very encouraging, and also, there are a lot of numbers. So Chief, I hope you're going to send us these slides, because some of these slides you were like barely on for five seconds, and I was like trying to read them so I could see, but it's impressive, and I want to appreciate the amount of data that's being collected, the partnership with the federal government, the interest in learning to do things differently. Like, it's hard to have someone come in and be like, "We think you're doing this, you need to do this differently," but like, if we can show results. But I do want to echo what, then it's all worth it. I do want to echo what my colleague, Councilmember Maple, said, and just really say that, like, this is not a lot of money that we're giving to these CBOs. It's really not. I mean, a lot of these folks are doing this more than full-time. A lot of them don't have other jobs, or they do have other jobs so that they can pay their bills, so that they can keep doing the work that they're doing the rest of the time. And so I just want to say that honestly, if it could be 10 times as much money, that would be amazing, because I think what we're seeing in terms of outcome, I think, and I said this before, that every dollar we can give to these proven intervenors, to these proven partners to help us is a dollar well-spent, and we're seeing that multiply in the impact in the lives that are being saved. And so I just want to say that it's not a lot of money. And also, just want to also point out, because I know we talked about this, Chief, when you first brought your violence framework to the councils, that not, that law enforcement, PD can't do all of this. And I know, like, you talked about other partners, but really, there's all sorts of other things that need to happen in communities, not just like community cleanups, but the housing services, the school services, the counseling, like, all that stuff that needs to happen so that you see the real outcome we want to see, which is healthy, safe communities. And so I would like to ask specifically for that survey data that you got from the community. I'd love to see the questions that were asked, and as much data as you can give us. You know, I think about the auditor when he does this community survey, and you don't have to get that technical with it, but I would love to see the information that you collected, both from the focus groups and the surveys, so that we can better understand what other things community members were pointing to, what questions they were responding to, so that we can start figuring out how we can continue to support in the other ways. And I know we talked about this briefly during our call this morning, Chief, about a couple of things. One, that I know YIPSY is also working on nonprofit organizational assistance, and I know Maria Lara, Assistant City Manager, set that up before YIPSY moved to the other Assistant City Managers. So how do we leverage those existing technical assistance contracts we have and really learn from the department, what YIPSY's been doing with the CBOs that are doing the pop-ups and other work? So really want to make sure we're not reinventing the wheel. And also thinking about gaps, you know, not all violence is caused by people affiliated with gangs. And, and I think that there's a lot, I'd really like us to think about, how do we look at that framework, but also look at beyond what PD is doing, and how do we think about where those other gaps exist? You know, you and I and Dr. Clavo have talked about missing and murdered indigenous relatives and other things that really have root causes that are much deeper and beyond what law enforcement can really understand or do anything about. So how do we figure out what, if we're really thinking about violence prevention in the mega sense, which is that we hope these numbers get as close to zero as possible, then how do we identify those gaps and think about what the council and our partners can be doing to better partner on those things? That is it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. You probably saw me taking a picture of Derek Suggs when he came to the microphone, and I kind of embarrassed him a little bit, because Derek is someone that, we've been investing in Derek since he was a little kid growing up. I've known him for many, many years, and I'm so proud of the man that he has become and, and the influence that he has on others. There are a lot of community partners out there that are just like Derek, that are doing great work. The Jackie Rose was already mentioned, Greg King, who's not here with us, Mervyn Brookins, who's not here, Gina Warren, Dr., Dr. Clav, I mean, Dr. Gravenberg, and we talked about Nikki Whiteside, and there's many, many more. I can't rename all the names, but just doing incredible work every single day. Their heart is in it, and they're making change, and they're making a difference. And we saw it in the results. This, this partnership, this collaboration that we have right now is, is making an impact. And I just want to personally thank Dr. Clavo, who puts her heart and soul in it every single day to make this partnership work. And you heard people referring to her, you know, she's kind of like the mama of the program, and everybody listens to Dr. Clavo. So I just, I know it's working. I see it working, and, and all of us see it working. We see the difference in the numbers and the results and the impact that it's making every single day. And so I just want to applaud you, I want to recognize you, I want to acknowledge you, I want to say, "Keep doing what you're doing," because what you're doing is having a positive impact here in the city of Sacramento. It's becoming a, a best practice that it can go somewhere else, and other people will come to Sacramento to see what we're doing so that they can do some of that themselves. So I congratulate each and every one of you. For those I mentioned and those I didn't mention, just let me know. Don't, don't talk to my head, talk to my heart, because I, I really appreciate the great work that's being done by every last one of you every single day. You're making a difference in the lives of our youth.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Talamontes.
Thank you, Mayor, and I have a question for you. I had the opportunity to attend Academics for Athletes at Grant High School.
Yes.
And I know you were given a really fancy ring. Where is it at?
Well, like the Super Bowl ring, it's so heavy that I just cannot wear it on my hand every day, but it was a great honor, and I have it in my office.
Okay. I just, I had to know where it lives or where it's at.
Yes, it is in my office. Pacers for life.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. I've also had the chance to see some of the incredible work being done by the organizations receiving the funding. Thank you for what you do, day in and day out, in your personal time, your professional time. I know you're, you're there for the community. I see you out there, appreciate you, like, just having someone to call, someone to text when I need help as a council member. To Dr. Clavo, you're amazing at what you do and your heart, like, just everything that you care about is exactly what the city of Sacramento is fighting for, so I appreciate you very much. I also love seeing that you're working with the County Board of Education. It's where I formerly was a trustee, so love to see that work. I do have a question in terms of, for Dr. Clavo. How much do we work with the Sacramento probation department for breaching our act? probation department for reaching our at-risk youth and just how do we interface with them? If at all?
So several of our CBOs actually go in and out of probation, out of juvenile hall on a weekly basis. A lot of them have programs that are currently established in juvenile hall.
Can I pause you for a second? Can we please have it be quiet in the council chambers? Mr. Worthy, if you have a conversation, can you take it to the hall, please?
Sure.
We can't hear the speaker.
You can't. You got to take the conversation outside, please.
I was on a whisper, you couldn't hear me.
Thank you.
I want a meeting with you though. Two minutes ain't enough.
Okay.
Come over to my office.
Thank you.
Please, we're in the middle of a meeting here.
Make it stop.
Okay.
Sorry, Dr. Clav.
That's what I do. I'm in the streets, I'm one of those black women that's just rolling around, minding God's business.
Okay.
My apologies.
No, no, thank you, Dr. Clav.
So what I was saying was, many of our CBOs that are in this space today and that we work with outside of this space are currently have contracts or are allowed to go in and out of juvenile hall. And so a lot of them have programs that are up and running and established inside a juvenile hall.
Okay, thank you. I know my brother-in-law's a probation officer, so you know, just working together and making sure that we can reach our youth is important to me. Thank you.
Most definitely.
And then actually, you know, I do have another ask. I know you're setting aside $80,000 and I think that's perfect because a lot of times we have organizations that bring students here for a field trip or need bus transportation to get to a game or whatever it may be. I ask that, you know, that you use those funds to help fill in the gaps of some of the financing sometimes organizations receive.
Yes, and you can allow, let them know that if they send me a proposal, a budget, who the attendees are, then we would review that and we submit it to finance and we get them. They need to register with the city as a vendor and also a BLTC and have all that in line and then we will look at their proposal.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Councilmember Laloe?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I want to thank you and the rest of the officers in the department for really, you know, trying your best, trying to keep our city safe and the numbers are showing. And I'm really glad that your department is understanding that working together with the CBOs is actually something positive. So working together, actually, we're seeing some great things happening. So thank you so much to you and the rest of the officers. Dr. Clav, thank you so much. I don't know if it's politically correct or not, but from what I'm seeing, you are the mama bear of this program.
Yeah, but I relinquish that.
Well, no, no. From what I hear, there's the normal process of the CBOs applying for these grants and then they have to get through you in order for that application to go through. So I really appreciate your leadership and working with these CBOs to make sure all the right ones are funded for the great work that they're doing. I also want to thank the CBOs that are here and Coach, I actually, Merv Brookins is here tonight. I know you might not see him, he lost a little bit about, he's lost a little bit of a weight. So he's kind of all the way back there, you know, so maybe that's why you missed him. But he's looking great back there. But really, I want to thank all the CBOs because, you know, to work together to make our community safe, that's the only way we can win this battle. And, you know, to the CBOs that I've talked to and what I've enjoyed is, not a single CBO has said, we can do this without the police department. So that's very important. And talking to you, Chief, you've made it very clear that police department can't do it without the CBOs. So I'm glad that we're seeing this, you know, collaboration to make sure that our youth are safe. I mean, that's a bottom line. Because today, youth are somewhat different from what the youths were about 20 years ago, right? 20 years ago, you had what we called the OGs and the youth was kind of looking up to the OGs and listening to the OGs. But the dynamic has changed now. You know, we got the social media that has become the director, the coach and all those goodies. So that your, the CBO's job has gotten even tougher now than what it was before the social media. So my hat is off to you, to all the organizations. Thank you so much. I'm hoping that next year we see even better numbers. The only thing that I'd like to add is, when we have these wonderful organizations that get these awards, I would love to ask for a workshop where these organizations can come and have a discussion and share with us what they've done, what the success rate has been. So in our head, we're hearing each organization's story. So if I'm stuck at a place in North SAC and if a South SAC organization that handles a particular thing, that I can reach out to them. So that's the only thing I would ask for next time presentation, that would be great. But beside that, thank you so much to all the parties. Thank you.
Just wrap it up real quick to just add my thank yous. Obviously, Chief Lester, thank you. And Dr. Clav, thank you for being the glue here. I want to thank the CBOs as well. Incredible work, but I also, not but, and I also want to thank the police officers. This is a powerful collaboration. That's what it is. It's when community and our city works together and the police officer out there on the front lines working with the community, it's meaningful and it's important. And I want you to hear that we value you and this partnership. I also want to say that I'm not a headline writer, but if I were, please distill all that has been said tonight and try to put it into form that is important for the community to hear and to continue to hear. Okay, here's my effort. City crime down 20%, violent crime 40%, city seen as national leader. City invests $3.2 million in youth and crime prevention. Police and community work together. That's the message here. I mean, I'm sorry, but there is a perception and in some ways it's a reality that we're suffering from a lot of trouble, especially around homelessness and crime related to homelessness, and we hear a lot about this. Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
And none of that goes away, but I think it's every bit as important for the people to know and to hear that because of what we're doing together, that there are some significant improvements and downward trends. And I don't want to forget, by the way, how this whole $3.2 million started here. I want to point to my colleague here, Mr. Jennings, who years ago, with the Gang Prevention Task Force and the first tranche of a million dollars, you see, sometimes you don't know how the seed you plant is going to grow and what form it's going to take. And there were some difficult moments with some of the, you know, some of the back and forth over some of the investments over the course of time, but here we are. Okay, it's another $3.2 million, so thank you. Celebrate the good stuff. Let's celebrate the good stuff, all right? All right, is there a vote to be had?
I don't have a motion or a request.
There's not a, we need a motion and a second. Okay.
Third.
Second, third, fourth, okay, whoever.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kaplan.
And a second by Councilmember Laloe.
All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain, that passes. Thank you all very much. Okay. Now, right at that tight hour here, but I think we're going to push through, okay?
Yes.
And I'm going to ask the city team on the Missing Middle to give us a succinct presentation. This is not the last, this is not the last workshop on the general plan or on affordable housing. We got a lot here, but we want to talk about the Missing Middle here and one approach by which we might diversify our housing stock. And then, members of the public, we will take public testimony and items not on the agenda, so everyone will be heard tonight, okay? Welcome.
Thank you.
Hold on, why don't you wait just a sec? People are clearing out, it's okay. We'll take just a breath. We'll stretch.
Five minutes to stretch, wait.
You want to say we should?
Thank you.
Okay.
Just side lunch?
Ah, side lunch, okay. There we go. Okay. All right.
Brian out there, gets stretched?
All right, we can get started now with item 19, which is the Missing Middle.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Nguyen, Associate Planner and Project Lead for the city's Missing Middle Housing Study. I have a few slides to present. We've been asked to keep this presentation down to 10 minutes and as planners, we have planned ahead and we have a shorter presentation prepared for tonight. And so I will highlight the key recommendations that staff has developed over the past year based on community input. So this Missing Middle Housing Study was commissioned in response to council's approval of the 2040 General Plan Key Strategy to allow a greater array of housing types citywide, intended to explore how Sacramento can thoughtfully implement this strategy. The city has been having this conversation with the community for almost three years now and residents have shared what they think could be challenges to implementation, including neighborhood scale, compatibility, onsite open space, trees, and attainability. The essence of the input we received can be captured by these three questions on the screen. Number one is what could Missing Middle Housing look like in Sacramento? Number two is will Missing Middle Housing be lower cost and attainable? And number three is how can the city promote homeownership and address potential displacement through Missing Middle Housing? The draft recommendations respond to each of these questions. Staff is defining Missing Middle Housing as neighborhood-scale buildings that contain more than one home, including duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, accessory dwelling units, and bungalow courts, that until very recently have been more or less prohibited in residential neighborhoods throughout America through our zoning rules. Although they contain more than one unit, these units typically have smaller square footages and can blend in well with existing neighborhoods, providing attainable housing options to middle-income earners. As a point of clarification, the intent of this study is to allow a greater array of housing types in the city's four, single-unit and duplex dwelling zones, the R1, the R1A, the R1B, and the R2 zones, which as you can see on this map makes up over half of the city. Other zones commonly found among corridors and city centers already allow higher intensity housing by right, including many of the multi-unit dwelling, mixed-use, and commercial zones. In response to feedback on the draft 2040 General Plan regarding higher floor area ratios in new transit, staff is currently analyzing the draft FAR map to ensure a floor area ratio of two for parcels found within a half-mile walking distance of high-frequency transit that are not zoned for single-unit and duplex dwellings. As one of the initial goals of the study was to increase housing capacity in our neighborhoods while maintaining a neighborhood scale through a Missing Middle Strategy. For the sake of time, staff will only be highlighting the key recommendations, but more details can be found in the staff report package. These are preliminary in nature with a few being shared as high-level concepts. Input from the community, from the Planning and Design Commission and City Council will help to shape the specific details. The recommendations covered in the next few slides respond to the first question of how could Missing Middle look like in Sacramento. Out of the built-form recommendations, staff would like to highlight four tonight. Under the proposed framework, floor area ratio or FAR was served to control the size of the building in proportion to the parcel size, and a modified bulk-control tent will guide where the massing of upper stories should go to ensure human-scale design. That's number two on the screen. The proposed Missing Middle Districts, I'll go over in the next slide. The third point here is staff is also recommending incentives for these projects to provide onsite trees, functional open space, and more pedestrian-oriented frontage in exchange for flexible application of certain development standards. The fourth one on this slide could help to create new homeownership opportunities by allowing smaller lots and smaller homes. Staff is recommending a multi-district approach to regulate where different Missing Middle types can occur and to what intensity through three Missing Middle tiers, developed from a citywide analysis that looked at existing patterns of land use, lot configurations, connectivity, and access to employment and transit. As proposed, Tier 1 would allow up to two primary units and two accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, for a total of four units, the lowest intensity of the three. Tier 2, which has greater access to transit and employment, allows up to four primary units and two ADUs for a total of six. With the greatest access to transit in a central location, Tier 3 would allow up to six primary units and two ADUs for a total of eight units. Proximity to high-frequency transit is a key factor in the creation of these districts and we ensured that all parcels within the single-unit and duplex dwelling zones within half-mile walking distance of a high-frequency transit stop were assigned to Tier 2, which would allow up to six units, responding to input received on the draft 2040 General Plan regarding increasing housing capacity in transit-oriented development areas while still maintaining the neighborhood scale. Please note that these Missing Middle tiers are only applied to the single-unit and duplex dwelling zones. The multi-unit dwelling, mixed-use, and commercial zones already allow higher intensity housing. On the next slide here, unfortunately, there are many barriers that currently exist to Missing Middle. And even if the city allows more units per lot, builders are unlikely to build them over the single-family product, which has a higher rate of return as a result of lower fees, faster permitting, more familiarity with the process, and less building code requirements. Missing Middle is challenging to finance and build, which on one hand speaks to the incremental quality of Missing Middle, but on the other does not help produce more attainable units from a feasibility standpoint. In 2021, the city of Portland implemented the Missing Middle Strategy through their residential infill project and they utilized a sliding-scale floor area ratio, or sliding-scale FAR, to incentivize more units, which has shown great promise as a way to help make Missing Middle more feasible. They reduced the allowed floor area that a single-family product can achieve and granted more floor area for each additional unit on the lot, which helps to make Missing Middle projects more attractive and also disincentivizes the construction of larger, more expensive So here's an example of how a sliding-scale FAR could look in Sacramento. A sliding-scale FAR could be regulated through the proposed Missing Middle Housing Districts with each district setting intensity limits on both the maximum number of units per parcel and FAR threshold on a sliding scale. For each additional primary unit provided, the allowed floor area ratio is increased incrementally. These thresholds were calibrated based on Sacramento's real estate market and prevalent lot sizes in each of the districts. The sliding scale would be designed so that the number of units allowed and the FAR threshold would be paired in a way that encourages smaller and therefore more attainable units. When paired with the proposed Missing Middle Housing Districts, the sliding-scale approach responds to community feedback received on the draft 2040 General Plan because it would increase not only housing capacity, but also affordability in our transit-oriented development areas. Under the proposed framework, Missing Middle could provide attainable housing options without requiring public subsidies. Is there a way the city could create even deeper affordability, longer-term affordability? One approach to consider is a local bonus program, specifically tailored for projects with four primary units or less. In exchange for providing income-restricted units, the city could provide a bonus which could take many forms, including additional units or additional floor area. As a concept, through a local Missing Middle bonus program, the city can encourage builders to incorporate regulated affordable units, likely between 60% to 80% of area-meeting income, and accept housing choice voucher tenants for a certain number of years. Staff is introducing this preliminary recommendation as a broad conceptual idea and is not making specific recommendations at this point. The specific details of the Missing Middle Housing Bonus Program will be shaped by the input that we receive. A few items, this is the last slide, a few items to wrap things up. Our self-guided online workshop with the detailed preliminary recommendations is available for public participation until November 3rd. The link is on the screen. The input and feedback that we receive on these preliminary recommendations will help us to refine and shape the final recommendations, which we're hoping to be able to share early next year. Once the 2040 General Plan is adopted early next year, staff will begin work on code revisions to implement this study's recommendations. So tonight, staff is seeking feedback from the city council to help shape the study's final recommendations and potential revisions to the draft 2040 General Plan proposed land use diagrams, including the potential incorporation of an FAR sliding scale and a Missing Middle Housing District approach as outlined earlier. So that concludes my presentation. I am joined by Matt Hurdle, Long Range Planning Manager, Alex Steinberger from Cascadia Partners, and Dan Peralek, and Roger Foreman from Optico's Design to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That was thorough and quick. Thank you, appreciate it. All right. Let us hear from the public on this item. I know we have ten or so people signed up.
Thank you, Mayor. I have eleven speakers. The first is Jonathan Cook, Erica Butler, Jenny Maital. I don't see movement, I'm gonna keep moving on. Jonathan Cook. Erica Butler. Thank you. Following Erica is Jenny Maital, then Dan Allison, then Dove Caden.
All right. How is everybody? So I am Erica Butler. I'm speaking today in favor of increasing the density even more. I'm somewhat concerned that you have both FAR and unit limits there, especially in transit areas where, in my view, density should be unlimited because you have more people living along transit, you have more places to go along transit, so you get more efficient utilization of it. In addition, I think greater density could also help with some of the funding issues, like I was seeing earlier, a lot of the issues with the stormwater drainage. There has been a program called Urban Three, which has looked at some cities' property values and tax revenue, and it shows that generally denser areas have much higher property values, and they tend to reap more taxes. Now, I know here in California, Prop 13 kind of complicates things, but I do think it can also make it somewhat easier for the council if we increase density because you can also benefit from, you know, the higher assessments, and it can also be beneficial to property owners. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jenny Maital. I don't see Jenny. Dan Allison. Following Mr. Allison is Dove Caden, then Ben Raderstorf.
Good evening, Commissioners. I would like to point out that the part of Sacramento that works really well is in District Four, Midtown, and the reason it works really well is because the city was largely out of the way when it was developed, and they did the right thing by removing parking minimums there. We don't need more regulations, we need less regulations. Let people build what they want, and that's the way to have a successful place like Midtown. I want to address one of the recommendations, number nine, approval process. The recommendation is a discretionary review process. That's a bad idea. That's how we got in this fix to begin with. That's why we're here. We don't have enough housing for people. We don't have any middle-missing housing except in Midtown because of discretionary review. That's the process by which neighbors prevent development that they don't like. The time for community input is during policy development, developing this policy. Once the policy is developed and in place, the community does not need and should not have input on every single project. And you won't hear from a lot of those NIMBYs, people against development here tonight, because they know that they can kill those developments later if there is discretionary review, so there should be no discretionary review. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Dove Caden. Ben Raderstorf, and then Ansel Lundberg.
Good evening, Council. My name is Dove Caden. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, or SACOG. One of our primary roles at SACOG is developing a long-range plan that demonstrates how the region can achieve reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from transportation. It's our largest contributor to emissions in the region. We know through our work that the most effective way that we can actually accomplish that goal is by investing in our existing communities and stimulating infill housing in the core of the region where people tend to drive less, where they have more of an opportunity to walk, bike, and take transit. SACOG provided verbal testimony earlier this year when council was discussing the public review draft General Plan. There was a lot of discussion at that meeting about increasing floor area ratios within a half-mile of transit. The General Plan is making this big transformational shift to no longer regulate the number of units on the lot and instead regulate the size of the building. So that's why that conversation was really focused on floor area ratio, but the impetus for SACOG's recommendations to increase FAR was, you know, not to allow for larger buildings for the sake of larger buildings, it was to facilitate more housing. One area of concern for SACOG is that the recommendations in this Missing Middle Housing Study seem to run counter to that policy move in over seventy percent of the city, including much of the area that is within that half-mile of transit, and it's looking at institute parcel-level unit caps again, either looking at four or six units for most of the city. And that's despite the city's analysis showing that projects of eight or more units actually can deliver more affordability and more feasibility. So SACOG has been a huge supporter of the city's bid to open up these, these low-carbon, high-opportunity, transit-rich neighborhoods, but we'd really encourage you to be more ambitious than the proposed unit caps that are being looked at in this Missing Middle Study and explore, in our opinion, at least eight units in those Tier Two neighborhoods. Thanks so much and appreciate the, the time.
Thank you for your comments. Ben Raderstorf, then Ansel Lundberg, then Connor Finney, Louis Marante.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll, I'll keep it as quick as I can. My name is Ben Raderstorf. I'm a board member of House Sacramento. I'm also a historic homeowner here in District Four, and I am proud of Sacramento in so many different ways, but the way that I am proudest of the city and the thing that I am most proud for is that we are going to be the first city in California to end exclusionary zoning and to move from a density-based code to an intensity-based code, to move from regulating the number of units to regulating primarily based on the size of the form of the building. So I'm, I'm here tonight to urge you, to ask you, please don't give up on this goal, on this effort to get rid of unit caps in favor of regulation by floor area ratio. And to illustrate this, I actually want to raise up a point from the, from the e-commerce for this meeting that comes from a group that, that often has a very different perspective from, from me. This is from someone in the Elmhurst Neighborhood Association who says, quote, "The unit allowance should be determined by the lot size of the district tiers, not applied to Hughes Swasth of the city." And to me, this, this really gets to the central idea of regulating by floor area ratio and not by, by unit caps. The idea is that neighborhoods are different, right? Some neighborhoods, we have really big lots, ten thousand square feet or more, where something like an eight-plex totally makes sense, and then there are other neighborhoods like Elmhurst where lot sizes are quite small, and maybe it's more like an ADU or a duplex. The point of FAR is that it is flexible and adaptable in that way, and it makes it possible for development to happen in a way that is tailored not just to the neighborhood characteristics, but all the way down to the lot itself, right? The size of the lot should determine what's, what's possible, not an arbitrary unit cap. So please, I urge you to instruct staff to take these unit cap recommendations back out, to follow the, the path set forward in the General Plan update, and let's be, let's make history as, as Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ansel Lundberg, then Connor Finney, then Louis Marante.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ansel Lundberg. I'm a board member of House Sacramento in District Seven, resident and a homeowner. I'm here to echo the comments of the previous speakers. We're supportive of Missing Middle Housing across the city. This is an urgent need to take steps to end the housing crisis and to put a dent in our homelessness epidemic in Sacramento. So there are some things in the policy we're supportive of, but we're very concerned about the unit caps. We're very focused on the form-based code that the council's been talking about for several years, so we, you know, this is the time for recommendations from council, and we would recommend taking a look at those unit caps, and thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Connor Finney, then Louis Marante.
Hello. Just want to thank council and staff for taking on this important issue. My name is Connor Finney. I am a state worker, renter, and D4 resident. After reading the draft recommendations from planning, I really hate to say it, but it leaves a lot to be desired. Unit caps completely undermine council direction, which was to increase allowable densities near transit stops and in high-resource neighborhoods. And the tier system maps that are proposed by planning literally mirrors redlining maps. Essentially, we are keeping density and affordable housing outside of Sacramento's highest resource neighborhoods. We should be working to undo wrongs of the past, not perpetuate them. I urge you to reject unit caps wholesale, stick to form-based zoning, and reject any arbitrary limits on affordable housing development in high-resource neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Louis Marante, then Mac Worthy and Rev.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Louis Marante. I'm also a board member of House Sacramento, also a D4 resident, one of the best districts. I have four main points I want to make in, in alignment with my, my friends who spoke previously. I want to urge the council to reject the unit caps and stick with FAR. FAR as a standard enforces the size and look of a building, but doesn't regulate the number of homes that you can put in a building. Arbitrary unit caps discourage having naturally smaller and naturally more affordable units in those, in those, in those, again, buildings that look just the same as another building with fewer units would, and so I think it's a, it's a much more strategic way of fitting more homes into existing neighborhoods. I'd also point out that the slides on the proposed FARs dip below one. Senate Bill 478 from Senator Scott Wiener from 2020 regulates local actions on FAR and doesn't, doesn't allow local governments to adopt FARs that are lower than one for many of the unit types that staff recommended. There is a carve-out for single-family zones in that law, but that probably doesn't apply to areas where the city itself has said multiple homes are allowed. I'd encourage you to look at that. I'd also discourage you from adopting Opticos' recommendation to have design review on the, the projects. That's not a modern, best practice, and discretionary review can trigger CEQA, which would be a tremendous challenge for these small, more naturally affordable projects to meet. In alignment with Connor's comments, I'd also point out that it'd be a fair housing challenge. Making, establishing discretionary review processes, having lower FARs in high-opportunity neighborhoods, pushing more development into formerly redlined neighborhoods, isn't the right move. We're, we're excited about what the city's doing with the Missing Middle ordinance, but I think there are some ways to make it stronger and more affirmatively further fair housing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mac Worthy, and then Rev is our final speaker.
We back at housing when you give developers the key to the city. When you could have set up equity loans from residents and had funded all low-income housing, and residents would have a supplement income. Construction's a temporary job. Developers don't live here, they're gone. But where, now, when you're designing houses, the colonial homes only twenty-eight-foot wide with baby wetters that was built, where people come over from Arkansas through here and build those homes. That's different from the Victorias. So when you put too many dogs in one cage to fight, don't you? That's what you're getting ready to do here. You're getting ready to contribute to crime when you're custard. Two cats can eat everything in a pot and never grow up. Two dogs will fight over their last visit, and this is what you're developing. You're really developing something that you stay away from and try to get the equity of people property in these neighborhoods to build the property in the county. You are trying to, it's gonna be sad. You're gonna find the same thing going on in God's, you're gonna find the same thing going on here, right there. You don't know what you're doing? Get out.
Thank you for your comments. Rev is our final speaker on item nineteen.
Hello, council. How y'all doing? Anyway, y'all, look.
No, nope, you can't do that yet.
I gotta face you?
You speak to the city council.
Well, I mean, you won't come out and speak to me.
Well.
She wouldn't come out and speak to me either. I'm praying that you will, though, sir. I'm a non-violent person.
Item number nineteen is Missing Middle Housing Study Preliminary Recommendations and Considerations for the Draft 2040 General Plan Proposed Floor Area Ratios.
Yes.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Yeah, to where I'm out here in these streets, so therefore I live in the streets, and I don't want a place, I want somebody else to have a place. I'm just doing what I'm doing. I know homeless people from my Homeless for Heaven organization, they're gonna be working. They're gonna be the, the VIPs, the vice presidents for my corporation, okay? There's nobody gonna be working for me, not a job, y'all got a job. Uh-uh. God said work. So they'll be working. I need miniaturized body cams from the city, that's all. It's gonna be like Guardian Angels. You're young enough, you're remembering, and so are you, over there chewing your food, Mr. Jenkins, the second guy. That, the Guardian Angels was just a community organization to step out of the community. I want to be able to give people something back by just stepping out in their front yard instead of hiding behind a curtain, everybody peeking out to see what's going on. If they come out in the community, like, I'm stuck out here. If I see a gunfight or a biting, I'm jumping right in the middle of that. I drive my limousine all up on the porch, everything, I'll stop something because I don't like seeing violence. I don't like seeing the drugs, I don't like seeing nothing. If I gotta see it, I'm gonna stop it. I just moved to a place, I had four sheriffs pull up on me last night because a female's cooking some food in front of my, my window, right on 2730 Arden, where the Maple Room is. They part of the Maple Room, an ex-sheriff that owns the Maple Room. Y'all hear that already? You know what I mean? He even brought his daddy up there to try to defend him. I'm like, knock it off, brother, what's wrong with you? You're spitting Cheetos on my head when you was drunk first thing in the morning telling me not to hang up on Homeless for Heaven sign. We trying to keep the homeless people away. But if people got drunk in this bar and they sleeping behind the bar, there's a guy right there right now, okay? I'm gonna let him stay there because I love my homeless people, but I'll go get him a cup of noodles or something.
Comment, your time is complete. Mayor, I have no more speakers on item number nineteen. Yeah, I have no more speakers on item nineteen.
Thank you. Let's turn it now over to the City Council. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff. Also, thank you, Matt, for letting me corner you at 2:00 PM so that we could talk about all of this. So I have far less questions than I had before, and I want to thank the presentation for being so clear about where this applies and doesn't apply, because there is definitely some alarm bells about the, especially the high-density zones that are in my district and on some corridors about the transit question, so I appreciate you clarifying that because honestly, as Dan said really eloquently, like, we already do this in District Four, and like, some, a lot of my constituents are actually super confused about why that would ever be a question, you know? Like, we have plenty of housing of all types, and most of the pictures in this report are actually housing in my district, and so it works really well for us, and, and we see that as a good model for everybody else. So I do want to clarify, though, and I think it's worth a follow-up conversation, I don't know how far we can get into it tonight, about the FAR questions that have been raised and the unit caps. I, I am concerned. I think there is some very valid points, that there are zones like in Oak Park where there's ten thousand square foot lots, and then there's lots in my district that are less than a thousand, and so like, that is gonna be very different, and, and I appreciate this kind of tries to marry both FAR and unit caps, but I do think we should talk about that and maybe do a follow-up, and I'd like to invite House Sacramento to join me for that so that we can dig in. But really excited to hear you say FAR, too, for near transit. That's, um, good job. So I want to also say that, I mean, we all know we need more housing and much more housing of, of all types, but this more attainable by design is, is a, is a hard assumption for me to make, because I think the premise of you're spending less money on the development because it's smaller, or maybe you're taking, making changes to the architecture or design might naturally make it more affordable, isn't necessarily playing out in my district anymore. I'm starting to see five hundred square foot units leasing for over two thousand dollars a month. I saw one for three thousand dollars a month. And five hundred square feet used to be the like, oh, that's easy, that'll be obviously less than two thousand dollars because it's super tiny, and it's not. And that's in the central city where we already waive a ton of fees and do a lot of work to try to make things easy for developers, and so I am very concerned that the attainable by design will take decades to manifest. And so when I was interviewed for this project, I know I talked a lot about the need to couple this with affordability policies, so I'm really excited to see this idea about a local density bonus. I think that's really cool, I'd like to explore that, but I would also like to look beyond just the incentives. You know, I'm really nervous about what we're seeing in District Four because I think we are the prototype for a lot of brilliant things and a lot of great innovation, and we're also starting to see the market really change quite quickly, and I'm nervous for a lot of my constituents who are starting to worry that even when they're living in these smaller units, that it's not gonna stay affordable. And so I just want to make sure that we're not overly assuming that just by permitting more units or smaller units or diversity size of units will mean that they'll be more affordable, because I think we need to be a little bit more proactive in making that happen, both through incentives as well as through policy. And so I just want to make sure that I say that as clearly as I can. Now, I want to ask for a response on the discretionary review question and just get staff to reply about the concern that was raised about what discretionary review might mean for some of these, and I'm sure, I saw you taking notes while those comments were happening, so I'd love to hear maybe your response to the concern about discretionary review.
Thank you, councilmember. I'm Matt Hurdle, Long Range Planning Manager. So for the preliminary recommendations, staff is recommending a staff-level site plan and design review. It is our most streamlined discretionary review process. For a triplex or fourplex, typically takes between forty-five and sixty days for the approval. We have noticing, and folks can provide comment, but there is no hearing, and a CEQA is usually... We have noticing, and folks can provide comment, but there is no hearing, and a CEQA is usually exempt or streamlined through the processes, whatever gets placed through our master environmental impact report or specific plans and other things. The reason that we're recommending a staff-level discretionary review is because this is gonna be new for the city, for applicants, for builders. We have a lot of new development and design standards, and we want some ability to have a little back-and-forth to work with the applicant, the builder, and the architect. That's the intent. If we have ministerial, and as folks know, we were the first city in the state to have our own localized version of a ministerial approval process. It's a checklist approval. There's no ability for having any conversations or back-and-forth. If they meet the minimum objective design and development standards, it's approved. But what we're finding is through a ministerial process, it doesn't necessarily mean a faster approval timeline, because if you don't meet one of the objective standards, you have to start the process over again with the applicant. So there's challenges there. If folks wanted to use a ministerial process, they could leverage and use the state's Senate Bill 35 process, which is a streamlined approval process, and it's streamlined less requirements for that for developments of under 10 units that would apply to that. So there will be a ministerial approval process that applicants can leverage. But at least in the interim, at least in the first stage, first year of this, we recommend some back-and-forth between the developer, applicant, and staff.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I want to say that I interact with you all a lot on projects that come through my district, and as was mentioned, I have a lot of very energetic residents who love to engage on projects. I remember once driving home and suddenly noticing that there was this piece of paper on all the light poles, and I was like, "How was that paper?" And so when I parked, I got out, and it was somebody saying, "Oppose this project." And I was like, "Ah." Like, where did this come from? So I know that that can be really heated, but I want to say, just for members of the public, that like, my experience with staff has been, especially when it comes to housing, the answer, they're working from yes. You know, they're trying to figure out, hey, maybe there's an issue with like this, or oh, hey, there's a concern with this very site-specific thing that we want to address, but I've never seen you say no to a reasonable housing proposal that's fit within the boundaries. But I would like to suggest, maybe if that's the intention, that we hit like some sort of two-year review mark where we hear how it's going and maybe consider getting rid of the discretionary review if it's going well, because I think by then we'll learn a lot about how this is playing out in real time in our community, and we can maybe make a more informed decision about whether that's still necessary or if we can move with a more ministerial process. So those are all of my comments. I just want to thank you for all the deep engagement that happened as a part of this, for your partnership with Unseen Heroes and others who really reach the community, do new ways of engaging. I thought that was really cool, and just want to say, fully supportive of all of this, just want to make sure that we're not overestimating in this market what affordability will be attained and that we're still being thoughtful about how we make sure that it really is the middle housing that we all hope it will be and not just very, very expensive housing in different forms. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor, and also want to start out by saying thank you. This is a really detailed proposal, and I know a lot of work went into this over many, many months and years and lots of conversations, and as always, appreciate the work with the community as you move forward on this. But I did want to start out with, you know, a conversation that we had earlier during our Affordable Housing Plan discussion at our 2:00 PM meeting. We've been here for a long time. Some of us since 10 on this dais. And that is around the absolute and utter need in our community for housing, period. It's what I heard the most on the campaign trail. It's what I hear every single day from my community members, is not just housing itself, but housing that people can afford, staying in their housing, and finding different options. And so to me, I think we should be very bold. I think that this is our time to, as one of the other speakers mentioned, to also undo past harms, right? So when we looked at zoning as a whole, that's a practice that's happened over many years in different communities, typically to restrict people from being in certain places or having certain types of housing. And so I think we have to also look at this from a historical perspective when we're taking a look at this. And that's it, folks. I don't know if people can still hear me. Maybe I should wait.
You're good. You can still hear me.
Hey, okay. And so I really do think that my inclination here is that we start off really bold and then we work backwards. And so for me, that means that we have to employ, you know, I hear my colleague, Councilmember Valenzuela, on, yeah, what we're seeing right now is units that are small and some cases that are not affordable. A big part of that is we have to focus specifically on affordable and low-income housing, and that's something that we're doing as a part of the other work. But also, to me, I think we should let the market help us as well, and that means building up a lot more supply, right? Because at its core, it is also a supply and demand issue. We need to make sure that there's enough housing options for people who need it, and that's eventually going to drive down costs in addition to focusing on the types of housing that we need. And so to me, that leads into my thoughts here on the approach as a whole. The first thing that came to mind to me is just around the complexity of the tier system. I know I mentioned this a little bit on our briefing call. While I understand what it's trying to do, I really think that maybe we're making it a little bit more complicated than we need to by breaking the city out into different compartments. I think if we take a look at, and not just the tiers themselves, but we're also laying on top of that are various standards, the unit caps are in place, and the FARs that we already talked about. So that's a lot of different layers at once. You know, I'm pretty well-versed on these issues, and I had a hard time following it to a degree. And so I just think about also my community members and how they read through these things, and this is really important to them. This is whether or not they're gonna be able to find housing in the city. And so I would personally want to venture away from doing a tiered system at all and say, "Okay, what is gonna be our uniform process throughout the city? What does that look like?" And then that brings me to the unit caps. I am in favor of not having unit caps at all. I think that this is a process, again, this is the inertia of the status quo. We see this around us all the time in policy, because something has been done in the past, it carries forward, and it carries forward, and at some point we have to stop and ask ourselves, was this a good policy in the first place? Did it make sense? What was it trying to accomplish? Was what it was trying to accomplish preventing people or housing or things from happening? I would argue yes. Or preventing or creating some neighborhoods where other people can't be in them, for example. And so I think, you know, I'm in favor of, let's open it up. This doesn't mean that all these housing types are gonna be built overnight. I very much doubt that a multimillion-dollar house in East Sacramento is gonna get knocked down for, you know, apartments. And what this could do in neighborhoods is create opportunities for more density, and that is gonna be good for the communities as a whole. And as another speaker mentioned, we actually see in the data that when there's more density, that actually increases home values. It's actually better for the neighborhood. And so I know there's a lot of fear-mongering sometimes around these policies, but I just don't buy into it. So personally, I would love to see no unit cap, but we keep our FARs. And then, and then the last thing that I wanted to mention is I'm also, you know, while I understand the staff-level process and the communication that needs to go back and forth, I am in favor of a ministerial process. I think as much as we can make it easy for people to build, we should. And, you know, again, maybe that's something that we can, you know, do, we can come back to, let's say, on the flip side of what you said, maybe we try a ministerial process, and if it's not working, like, we have our community members who are coming and they're saying, "You know what? All these projects are going up. This isn't working for me." Then we can come back to the drawing board, but for now, I'd rather start big and then pare back. And so I will pause my comments there. I'll also provide these to you in writing. See you taking notes feverishly, but thank you so much again for all of your work.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for all of your work. Once again, our planning staff has been hard at planning as we look at coming up to the 2040 general plan, and I know this has been a long time coming. I want to thank staff for working with me and answering a lot of my questions. I do like the thought process that has come out and the recommendations that staff have put forward. I think it's bold, yet still thoughtful. Excuse me. So one of the things, when I was shown the map, I looked at it and I went, "Whoa, wait, like, why don't I have a lot of higher tiers in North Natomas?" And when, if you want to come back up for a second, and answer, when I asked that question in North Natomas, you know, when you look at it, we basically only have Tier 2. There's some small areas, but is there something in North Natomas that may prevent those switches or being, going to higher tiers?
So, okay, there we go. So the tiers were developed based off of analysis, and the key considerations, the key factors were the size of the lots, the existing zoning, and proximity to employment and transit. And so, as you saw, most of District 1 and most of North Natomas is Tier 1, mostly because of the smaller lot sizes of North Natomas, because North Natomas is a newer development area, and so the lots there are typically on the smaller side. And so taking that into consideration, staff, based off of our analysis, thought that having a lower unit cap and lower tier would make sense for these smaller lots.
I appreciate that and explaining that thought process. I also, in talking to staff, you know, said this is a time to be bold. Was there also an issue with current PUDs with some of the developments that might need to be amended if we were to change things?
So I can take a stab at that, and then Matt, feel free to chime in. But yes, most of North Natomas has PUD guidelines that supersede our zoning code when it comes to development. So the standards in the PUD guidelines are, take precedence over Title 17 zoning standards. And the city has the authority to amend or repeal the PUDs, and we, from an initial, we will need to discuss this with our city attorney, but from our initial discussion and conversation internally, PUD guidelines do present a barrier for homeowners, because then they would have to amend the PUD, which is a lengthy and pricey process. So the other piece of it is that the PUD guidelines can be repealed and can be amended, and that would be a second step or an exploratory stage following sort of the initial recommendations here, that we can take a look at those PUDs and take a look through those guidelines and see which PUDs are presenting barriers and which standards are kind of prohibiting or preventing missing middle types from being built.
I would like that, to the extent, I think, while North Natomas does have smaller lots, if we need to look at the PUDs that they are preventing something, I do want that looked at, because we bring up historical inequities, and you look at the maps, and you look at where density can be increased, and it wasn't in my district. And I've said that oftentimes, that I spent a year in high school in Europe and took public transit everywhere, and the only way to get public transit viable in North Natomas is to increase the density. And so, you know, that conflict with our PUDs, especially around future transit corridors, I would love if you guys could take a look as something that needs to be, you know, this is one city, not just my district, but, you know, we all have to share in this to make it viable, and I want my district to be part of that. Even though this was master-planned, I don't think we fully intended this when North Natomas came about, but I think we still have opportunity because there still are transit zones such that we can do this. Not to mention, our suburbs deserve little, small mom and pop and cafes. When, as I said earlier at the 2:00, when urban planning came about, it placed the emphasis on cars. And the only way we're going to meet our climate goals is if we get people out of cars and do active transportation. The only way to do that is to increase density. So this is all one big circular happy hug of planning that I think we need to address because you specifically called out and said, "When we look at this, it's going to look and feel like the aesthetics of the community." And I think that's really important, not, you're in a residential neighborhood and all of a sudden you're right next to some, you know, 20-story building. It's how do we increase the possibility of these units that match the community? And that was something else I just wanted to bring up that we had kind of discussed, and Councilmember Valenzuela briefly pointed out. When we look at affordability and we look at incentives, I think we have to also, if we as a city are looking at incentives, put in a requirement that, for the length of time of the affordability. That goes, and we do that with affordable housing, it should be the same here if we're bridging the gap, which I think addresses some of the things that we want to not price people out, but if they are being given an incentive to build this, that there is some sort of affordability piece that still allows it to be rented out and make money, but not that it goes hand over foot obnoxious in what people are charging. And I know there's discussions, or there was just a change in state law that allows potentially ADUs to be of title, so we have to look at that in how we're planning everything else and how that fits in, because if somebody says, has an ADU, and they create a lot and they sell that, is that then viable where somebody could maybe add in another unit or two on that? How does that all fit? And what is the process in that? As always, I hope our tree requirements are maximized in anything that we do, even though I know we're doing, we're looking at FAR. And then I think the biggest thing, where community members come out, and they may oppose this, and they may have misconceptions and concerns. I think when these ordinance go into play and they pass, I think we have to do a concerted effort to create an educational piece so that people understand what these zoning changes are, why the changes are needed, and how the community benefits and the city as a whole by doing this. What is the economic viable neighborhood benefit? I know that's something that would be very beneficial to my community, because they only hear and come after the fact, but I'm gonna get them on the front end to explain why we need to do this. And then that also goes to, I would love when these come in that we consider expanding the notice beyond 500 feet. I gotta tell you, 500 feet doesn't go very far, and housing impacts go far beyond 500 feet. This is what I've asked of other areas, so if we could look at the expansion of that. But otherwise, I support how you're moving forward, what you're moving forward with. Thank you for the balance, but being bold at the same time.
Councilmember Talamontis.
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Kaplan on expansion of 500 feet to notice neighbors. Also agree with Councilmember Valenzuela in terms of cap, unit caps versus FAR, to make sure that we can do more outreach to the community, hear from more people, so that we can increase how many homes we have available here in Sacramento. And I'd love to see more neighborhoods included in the upzoning throughout the city. I know my area in particular, in North Gate and Gardaland, we have really, really large lots, and I just want to make sure that people are able to take advantage of this new policy, although I know most of my homes in North Natomas, it's the home of high density, so I don't see this working anywhere there because of just how close our homes are already. Only thing, I support staff's discretionary review. As we move forward, it's important to me that staff is able to overlook plans, give feedback. And a few years ago, when we started this process, we assured neighbors that the city would have some level of involvement in it, and it's important for me to stick to our word of what we told people in 2021 and before that. So very supportive discretionary review.
Thank you. Just a couple last comments for myself. This is really important work. Obviously, you know, this afternoon, we heard the city-county housing plan, and yes, most of it was focused and concentrated on the homeless problem and very, very low income, but all these issues go together, because the more different kinds of housing, especially affordable housing we have, the more we can create the pathways for people to get housed and to remain housed. And so one thing is, I do hope that there is some integration of the information and data from all these plans, because when SHRA did their job, but the gap analysis, it didn't necessarily, I think somebody asked this question today, it might have been Council Mayor Portem Vang, it didn't include, or it was Vice Mayor Gaddo, excuse me, it didn't include the additional supply that we expect to be produced as a result of this policy. And so I'd like to see some of that brought together. On the policy itself, I understand the balance here, but I really tend to agree with Councilmembers Maple, Valenzuela on this and some of what Councilmember Talamontis said. This is a time to be bold and to actually try to quantify what this policy could mean if it is done right. Now, we have to respect the neighborhoods, and Councilmember Kaplan maybe put out the thing we don't want to see, right? Which is the 20-story next to, I get that, right? Nobody wants that, but I am concerned that the unit caps are not uniform. In other words, why why should you be able to build eight units in Tier 3, but only four in Tier 1? And does that unintentionally lead to some neighborhoods being excluded from the policy of increasing housing supply and densification? And understanding that there can be too much on any given parcel of land, is the trade-off here some form of reasonable design review? In other words, so that we err more on the side of more, more supply, upping those caps. But we do say that, in a fair way, that there has to be, that the product has to be quality, that's all. However, we define quality in a way that isn't exclusionary, that intends for us to say yes, as Councilmember Valenzuela said, you know, the default position is yes. But some form of a design review so that we ensure that what is being built is quality. You do that, then I think you push harder on, you raise that unit cap, and at least make it uniform in some ways, so that everybody in the city is participating in this citywide goal to increase housing and decrease affordable housing. So those are my comments. Thank you. Excellent. That's the workshop. Okay. More to come. Let us now hear the public testimony on items not on the agenda. Appreciate everyone's patience. I know everyone wants to be heard, and I'm going to intend to stay and listen. So let's take the public testimony for items not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I have 19 speakers. The first is Jared Landras. And I believe I, there he is. Following Jared is Michaela, then Charles Fost.
Well, I've been here several times. So I'm still having the problem with the tents being in a residential area. And we just got rid of some, and then some just came back in. But we just had last week another fire from one of the tents from them doing drugs in them. But this is a continuing thing that's going on with these tents that really don't belong in that area at all. And I also have the violations that the city has, it's right here. It says the unlawful camping and also the storage that's there. Because people, they're like building houses almost down these trails, and this is going, well, that's not up to code, because that shouldn't be like that going on. But the point is, I think that, I think having apartments for the homeless is what we're going to be looking at, because I think we have to go to this. I think we have to have onsite counseling in these apartments. So people that are either elderly, or if they're mentally ill, or if they're on drugs, and you want to get, they want to get off drugs, and have a counseling center right in these apartment complexes that they have, I think is a great idea to do. But I don't know how the city is on that. But that's another whole deal that I kind of won't get into now. But anyways, so the problem out there is just, is continuing. It's not getting any better out there. We're getting more and more tents coming out there. Arco is having a problem with the tents behind there. They had to put up a brand-new iron fence to keep the homeless out from that. And they have one of these two, the violations, they have this too. There's about 20 of these that are floating out here. There's probably going to be a lot more, because this affects probably about 50 to 60 homeowners out there. So we're kind of like, we're fed up with it. And every time we call the police, we really, they say, well, we can't do anything. You have to go to the city council. The city's going to have to do something about it. We can't enforce the law out here. We can't do anything. We have, like, people driving 75 miles an hour in a 25 zone, and it's just, it's out of control out there.
For your comments. Our next speaker is Michaela, then Charles Fost, then Hayya, then Amira.
Good night. It's already nighttime already. I want to start off with a quote from probably the most famous document in the United States. "We hold these truths to be evident, self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Lately, through the unjust media narrative, there's been a rise in Islamophobia in the United States. I told you all last week about a six-year-old boy who was stabbed 26 times by his landlord, and as he was being stabbed, the assailant said, "You Muslims must die." Over the weekend, shots were fired at protesters in Chicago, a car ran through protesters in Minneapolis, and in Cleveland, a man walking home from eating his lunch was run over and was a victim of hit-and-run. The suspects in that hit-and-run case were yelling racist rhetoric such as "kill all Palestinians." I have asked again for solidarity from this council for the Arab and Muslim communities. All except one of you have remained silent. Thank you to Councilwoman May Vang. Just this last week, she retweeted a peaceful event that occurred Friday at the Capitol, and I appreciate you bringing awareness to that. Mayor Steinberg, two weeks ago, you brought up in this meeting the scale of the deaths that happened on October 7th in Israel. Let me bring at a scale for you today. As of today, 5,700 Palestinians have been killed. That equates to 26,000 Israeli lives and 952,000 American lives. Thank you.
Next speaker is Charles Fost. Following Charles is Hayya, then Amira, then Zaid, then Ali.
Good evening. First thing I'd like to say is I've been next to a baby for three hours, and it didn't start making a noise until 10 minutes ago. I think that with all the special accommodations and recognitions you guys do, that baby should get one. Being the most well-behaved baby, like, in Stockton Boulevard. Maybe next week, do a presentation for that baby. The next thing I want to talk about is sweeps. Broadway's had a lot of sweeps going on in the last month. A lot of people that I interact with, help bring food to on a weekly basis, have moved, and I don't have any communication with most of them. The ones that I do have communication with call me at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning and tell me about some of the stuff that they're experiencing, either in shelters or on the street. And it's not good stuff. It's, some of it's really disgusting, actually. The other thing I want to talk about is that, I think, Mayor, you have a pretty good opportunity with what you guys have been planning, you and the governor, with, you know, stuff, tiny homes, and what could happen on Stockton Boulevard. But I think there's an opportunity to do more. And I think that that should be explored. And it's, the property that you guys are wanting to do this on is something that I brought up years ago at city council and have brought up multiple times since then. And I think that using that location with a couple other locations nearby that may not be in the city, they might be county, just because of how close that is to the edge of the city. But I think you have the opportunity to do something really special there. But it has to be planned. And my fear is that you guys are just going to pick an operator that's the cheapest operator and not do something that's going to be the best operator, or the best system there. So if you can, you know. More further research, I don't know. I don't even know where I'm going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Hayya. Following Hayya is Amira, then Zaid.
Hello. I am with the Sacramento Regional Coalition for Palestinian Rights. I want to urge our representatives to take action and demand an immediate ceasefire on the Gaza Strip. Over 6,000 bombs have been dropped in an area approximately the size of Sacramento County. This cannot continue. The Israeli government has bombed homes, schools, refugee camps, UN facilities, and hospitals. As a result, over 5,000 civilians have been killed, over 2,000 of them being children. And there is approximately 16,000 severely injured and in need of medical attention. They have also displaced 1.4 million people. Israel is depriving civilians and children of food and water, and it is unacceptable. Depriving hospitals of aid and electricity is unacceptable. A civilian population should never be punished in this way. It is collective punishment, it is a war crime, and it is a violation of international humanitarian law. This is not the first time. Since 1936, the Israeli government has breached international law on countless occasions. They have illegally occupied and blockaded Palestinian territories, built settlements, enforced an apartheid system that strips Palestinians of their most basic human rights, and have targeted and killed civilians on a mass scale for decades, all in defiance of international law. We claim to be a society founded on ethics and morality, discussing the importance of humanity, compassion, and justice. Yet, when confronted with this genocide and the loss of thousands of civilians, there's only one question. Are these principles universal or for just a select few? As the world turns a blind eye, thousands of innocent Palestinian children have been murdered. How many more lives have to be lost before we take action? I ask that you rise up, demand a ceasefire, and send the unrestricted humanitarian aid.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you.
And next speaker is Amira.
Thank you, Hayya. I am a doctor of pharmacy, here on my own accord, not just as a representative of the Palestinian-American community, but as a voice for humanity, peace, and justice. Water, food, and electricity has been completely shut off by the Israeli government, not allowing humanitarian aid into the country, with over 1.4 million human beings displaced, 5,000 innocent civilians killed, and 2,500 of those being children just obliterated. I urge each one of you to recognize the universal implications of this genocide. In the face of the ongoing extermination in Gaza, humanitarian aid plays a crucial role in alleviating the suffering of innocent civilians caught in the midst of this catastrophe. We must demand humanitarian efforts that provide essential supplies and medical assistance for those in Gaza. Furthermore, it is crucial to shed light on the dire medical crisis in Palestine. The ongoing genocide has exacerbated an already fragile healthcare system, leaving innocent civilians, including women and children, in the perilous state. The statistics paint a grim picture that demands our immediate attention and action. Over 16,000 injured civilians need medical attention. According to reports from the World Health Organization, the healthcare system in Palestine is in a state of emergency. Hospitals are unable to support the overwhelming amount of victims with the severe shortage of medical supplies, equipment, and personnel. Shockingly, more than half of the essential drugs are at zero stock, leaving patients without access to vital medications. Surgeons are performing procedures without anesthesia, without sterile equipment, and in some cases, with the only light coming from their cellphone. Moreover, mental health issues are on the rise, especially among innocent children who have endured trauma of violence and becoming orphaned. It is our moral duty to address this medical crisis in Gaza. We cannot stand by idly while innocent lives are at stake. We must advocate for the immediate and unrestricted flow of humanitarian aid and medical supplies to Gaza. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Zayed. Zayed Moran. Zayed, then Ali Hamid, then Amani Yonas.
In an attempt to address antisemitism and somehow redress the horrors of the Holocaust, you're allowing Israel to get away with an apartheid, ethnic cleansing, detention of children, torture, rape, restriction of movement, religion, and many other freedoms. After every genocide, the world cries out, "Never again." And yet, here you see another attempted genocide unfold right in front of your eyes. And you don't just watch, you actively support the oppression. We will not allow you to get away with that. While I by all means condemn the attacks by Hamas on the Zionist non-cabotans, I'm also condemning the demonic acts and violence of Israel and our tax money that has been inflicted on the Palestinians in the greater globe since 1948. I stand for the Palestinians and the native people, and for the right to self-determination. As long as we allow the continued oppression of the Palestinians and place higher values on lives and the right to self-determination of some over others, we will not see peace in the Middle East. There will and cannot be peace without justice. And there cannot be healing without justice or accountability. It is not a matter of if we return to our homes, it's a matter of when. To my Palestinian brothers and sisters, God is with you, Allah makum. We will not forget nor forgive the transgressions of the past and the present. We will strive every day to provide justice in our future and simultaneously ensure not one drop of innocent blood goes in vain. You will answer on the day of judgment for your complicity. From the river to the sea.
Speaker is Ali Hamid, then Amani Yonas.
Last week, after attending this council meeting, I was informed that the best thing I could do was to inform and educate our city council on what they are supporting. Our city council is supporting the 17-year blockade on the Gaza Strip, which has a population of 2.3 million, of which 1.5 million are refugees, packing only 140 square miles. This has led to a 46% unemployment rate and unlivable conditions for the residents. When the occupants of Gaza and the West Bank decide to resist and fight against their occupiers with weapons that are primitive compared to the IDF's new American weapons, they're called terrorists and accused of being baby killers. And when the IDF murders 5,000 Palestinians, with 2,000 of them being innocent children, they're called the most moral army in the world. It is deplorable and hypocritical how our government officials can support Ukrainians in their struggle against the Russian invasion. But when a hospital holding the injured women and children was bombed by the occupation forces, killing about 500, then the water and electricity are cut off to the Gaza Strip, which all violates Geneva Conventions, the only thing our council member Lisa Kaplan can mention is that she stands with Israel because too many civilians are being killed. She, like many Americans, is desecrating the graves of civilians who have been bombed by the occupation forces when they're complacent with the IDF carpet bombing Gaza with no regard for innocent lives. History did not start on October 7th. Since 1948, when the Israeli forces kicked Palestinians out of their homes, which is why most of Gaza is refugees, and occupied the remaining Palestinian territories in 1967, then built settlements on top of them, the Palestinian people have been victims of a brutal colonialist settler entity that constantly deprives them of their basic human rights. Even the Nobel Prize winner Bishop Desmond Tutu, who was an activist in South Africa against apartheid, says that the living conditions the Palestinians are currently in are worse than those of the Bantustan black homelands. We have seen the same story play out in South America with the apartheid regime, and we're seeing it occur again in front of our eyes. As history has told us, this occupation will not last, and the Palestinian people will have freedom.
Comments? Amani Yonas. Following Amani is Silray Garcia, then Lambert Davis. Go ahead and get started, and I can pull it up.
Most American politicians have no clue about any of this, although the former Republican Congressman Ron Paul once made this point on the floor of the House.
Hamas was encouraged and really started by Israel, because they wanted Hamas to counteract Yasser Arafat.
Arafat himself told an Italian newspaper, and quote, "Hamas is a creature of Israel." He even claimed that former Israeli Prime Minister Yitzhak Rabin admitted as much to him, calling it a fatal error. Now, you might be wondering, why should I believe mad Ron Paul or the famously shady Yasser Arafat? Well, you don't have to. You can believe top Israeli and US officials who've basically owned up to all this. Brigadier Yitzhak Segav, for example, who is the Israeli military governor in Gaza, and later told a New York Times reporter that he helped finance the Islamic movement. "The Israeli government gave me a budget," he said, "and the military government gives to the mosques." Colonel David Hakam, who worked in Gaza in the late 1980s as an Arab affairs expert in the Israeli military, has admitted that the "original sin" was Israeli support for Yassin in the late 70s. But at the time, he has argued, nobody thought about the possible results. Well, Avner Cohen did. Cohen was the Israeli official who was responsible for religious affairs in Gaza for more than two decades, and who now says, quote, "Hamas, to my great regret, is Israel's creation." Yeah, Cohen's word.
Next speaker is Silray Garcia, then Lambert Davis.
Good evening, council, Northern California citizens. My name is Silray Garcia de la Cadena from the Northern California Carpenters. Today, I heard words such as funds, fees, taxes, resources, which all equates money. Sure sounds like we could all use some money. But love is going to change everything. So for now, let's talk about some money. Today, I would like to help you with your solution, or give you a solution to put, that you would put verbiage in some of these projects that you're going to award soon, today, or in the days to come. These projects, if you could put verbiage that talks about our core values, so more money comes into the city instead of money going out. Let me give you an example. If you get contractors, and the verbiage that you put, make contractors hire apprentices with a training program that gets kids off the street, or people that don't have the funds to go to school. Healthcare, have them put verbiage in these contracts that you award with healthcare, so that someone that hurts themselves or breaks their arm or something doesn't have to use funds from the city or the state. A prevailing wage. A prevailing wage, prevailing wage that gives people enough money to live in some of these homes that you guys are thinking about building. And a local hire, so that you don't, these contractors don't bring in people from out of the state or from out of the area. Local hires so people that work here, that live here, could actually live in some of these homes you guys are thinking about building. That's all I ask. We could do this together, we could collaborate and make changes, so that we could, so you guys could focus on helping some of my beautiful brothers and sisters right here that are having issues in their homeland or in their local cities. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Your comments. Our next speaker is Lambert Davis. Calling Lambert Davis is Mac Worthy, then Jessica, then Jay Eldon.
Put this up here. Okay. My name is Lambert Davis, and I'm a native of Sacramento. Tremendous fondness for Sacramento. It's a multi-cultured city, so as you look around and listen to what they're saying, it appeals to me, because I'm a multi-cultured person. I come from that background. Now, what I see here, I don't see it up there, but anyway, I would like to recommend that they bring back public comments. Some people do not want to come here, some people can't come here. So the public comments, that's kind of like a reflection of what's in this room right now, because there's a freedom of speech in this country that's not being acknowledged. You should let people call in. It's my understanding of watching Minty, she can mute people if they go too far, but for the disabled, they can't get in here. They cannot voice their opinion. Now, what I have here, I'm the one who made this happen, and I'm proud to say it, even though it's not being done today. This is the city manager's report, and I don't see it being done, and this is public comments. And by the way, I've been noticing in the last two or three weeks, they have been doing something they call the city manager's report, but it's not being done by the city manager. The city manager and the assistant city managers, that's six people. They should be able to come down here, right here, and give us the report. Minty does it for the city clerk. Mike Josso does a good job. Give us the city manager's report, and don't have some other guy coming up here that talks about anything but the budget.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Mac Worthy, then Jessica, then Jay Eldon.
Yeah, I can't figure that. What I speak here, it's a freedom of speech, and I can challenge that over across the street, on the oath. I wonder, can the lies on the podium do that? No. People, now we see real terrorists. Department of Justice called people when they defend their baby, they are terrorists. Hamas is not a terrorist, that's the government. Why can't we accept it? Because of the Jew. Screw you, we can't accept it. Let the Akko Abraham come in, and he will tell you who these people are. Understand, this is Ismail's offspring. Palestinians have that territory. The Jews in America will never control that territory. Understand a nuclear weapon, you could be dropped on Sacramento, and the people and stock will never fill it. Study Stafford University, all that nonsense. The money, it's the money. Why did $6 billion be in Seoul, Korea, and cut, and that was just, that was money? Did you control the dollar?
What?
Did you control the dollar?
Sit down. Sit down.
This is my freedom of speech.
The Jew controls the dollar.
The politics, just like right here, you could have got assets.
That is antisemitism.
That ain't no, you ain't got no right to tell me what is a hate speech and what is not speech.
You're a fool.
Why I can criticize the Jew? Everybody else can be criticized, but you criticize the Jew, it's anti-Semitic. Why? Why?
Point of order.
It doesn't make sense. If you are the problem, who was Germany fighting in 1933? Tell the people the truth.
Point of order.
Comment, your time is complete.
Your time is up. Sit down.
Your time is complete. I do want to remind members of the public.
Sit down.
Mr. Worthy, your time is complete. Please take your seat. I do want to remind members of the public that Government Code Section 54954.3 provides that members of the public may address the city council on any item that is within the subject, matter, jurisdiction of the legislative body of the city of Sacramento. So our next speaker is Jessica. I have eight more speakers. Jessica, Jay Eldon, Sabrina Abbott, and Neda Rehan, then Salisa Campos. Jessica?
Evening, guys, and Mr. Scott, we have a problem out there in the street. Somebody shot themselves on Sunday night. They need help, crying for help, but it's too late. We need help out there, get out the street. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jay Eldon. Following Jay is Sabrina, and then Neda.
Hello, Council, hello, Mayor, City Manager. I'm here to talk about the sweeps of homeless camps in Sacramento. The city needs to provide actual services that fits the needs of the homeless community in Sacramento and stop the sweeps that are getting more and more aggressive. Homelessness continues to be the number one issue for this council. This summer, the council held a workshop on homelessness, which resolved in a new enforcement protocol and a new plan for safe grounds. We get a weekly update on enforcement, in which the fire department says how many cases were opened and closed. That language is really misleading. I'm guessing that cases open means complaints about homeless camps, and cases closed means homeless camps removed, the number of people who lost their shelter. I want us to reflect that this all involves human lives. If people don't go into one of the few shelters available, they aren't allowed to camp anywhere else in Sacramento. If they are one of the majority of homeless who couldn't get into shelter, there is nowhere for them to exist in the city. And yeah, I feel bad breaking up like all of the support for Palestine with, you know, the issues in Sacramento too, because I do think that y'all need to listen to the Palestinian support that's here, and actually take a real look at what's going on.
Our next speaker is Sabrina. Sabrina Abbott, then Neda Rehan, then Salisa Campos. Please proceed.
So I want to share a message from this little girl named Rachel. She's from Olympia, Washington, and she has a message for all of us about peace, love, and unity.
Children, I'm here because I care. I'm here because children everywhere are suffering, and because 40,000 people die each day from hunger. I'm here because those people are mostly children. We have got to understand that the poor are all around us, and we're ignoring them. We have got to understand that these deaths are preventable. We have got to understand that people in third-world countries think and care and smile and cry, just like us.
16th of March 2003, Rachel Corey, an American student activist, was killed when she tried to stop the Israeli army from destroying a Palestinian home. The 23-year-old wore a fluorescent jacket during the peaceful demonstration in front of the house in Gaza. An Israeli bulldozer knocked Rachel down, crushed her with its blade, and then backed up and ran over her again.
High level with the driver of the bulldozer. She was up, her head and upper torso were actually above the blade of the bulldozer, so he could very clearly see that she was there, her in her orange fluorescent jacket that she was wearing. But instead of stopping at this point, he continued forward, which buried her legs and pulled her legs down. And as she got pulled down, she was pulled out of view of the bulldozer driver. And if he had stopped at this point, he may have only just broken her legs, but he continued forward anyway, until she was sucked all the way underneath the bulldozer.
It's hard to hold in your mind, you know, the complete reality of what's happening here. Sometimes I'm sitting down to dinner with people, and I just realize that, that there is a massive military machine surrounding them and trying to kill these people.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Neda, then Salisa.
Hi, my name is Neda. Good evening. I am a physician assistant and have been serving the Sacramento community for over 10 years, and I'd like to first finish this video.
People that I'm having dinner with, these families that I'm sitting down to eat with, and who are being very generous and kind to me, and their children here who are incredibly threatened, living lives that no child ever should have to live. And, and so, I feel a lot of horror, really, I feel a lot of horror about the situation. The current Israeli government, I don't have a great deal of faith that they're going to listen to any message from me. I think it has become clear that their, this government does not care about the safety of its own people and doesn't care at all about the lives of Palestinian people.
We have got to understand that these deaths are preventable. We have got to understand that people in third-world countries think and care and smile and cry, just like us. We've got to understand that they are us, we are them. My dream is to stop hunger by the year 2000. My dream is to give the poor a chance. My dream is to save the 40,000 people who die each day. My dream can and will come true if we all look into the future and see the light that shines there.
I'd like to remind everybody that this video was from 20 years ago, and may Rachel Corey rest in peace. Dear human beings, there is no side to pick. Preservation of human life is the side to pick. A world where no child is traumatized by war is the side to pick. Admitting that we are a traumatized species in deep need of healing is the side to pick. More bombs, more destruction, more death will only lead to more of the same.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Salisa. Our next speaker is Salisa Campos, then MVW, then O.
Again, I'm here in solidarity with the Palestinian people, and very disappointed when the mayor put out a statement in support of the IDF. And when you could be using, and Katie as well, I'm not forgetting about you, but, you could, we are in California, our money, you could choose to have our money to not support that, you could choose to use your voice to not support that. And one of the things that I thought was interesting is when you spoke out against Hamas, or like the persecution of Jewish people, and you were very concerned about the safety of Jewish people, yet when we had white supremacists using your platform in here and our community to spew their rhetoric and to recruit people and to come week after week, not only just in these meetings, but to call in and to come into our other spaces outside in the community and spill their Nazi rhetoric, you had nothing to say. So I'm, my only conclusion is that you're just racist as fuck, because if your only fear of people that are, that have, if your only fear is of the brown people who may be upset with the people that are committing genocide against them, but then you use it to frame it as if you are worried about people being antisemitic, it's manipulation, it's dangerous, it's what you guys do in our community when you say that people hate white people because they want cops to stop killing black people, you know, like you use the same types of manipulation, and it's not even so much, like there's a saying that people would say that like, your racism is showing, or something along those lines, but it's so far beyond. You guys should use your platform to advocate for the ceasefire immediately in Gaza. And that is it.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is MVW, then O, and then Rev. I have three more speakers.
Stay. Stay, please stay. Please stay. Please stay. Don't go. Please stay.
MVW, then O.
Please go. Brothers, okay, please stay. Please stay. Don't let that take you out, okay?
MVW?
As a black woman, I'm here because you refuse to say the minimum, and I stand in solidarity with Palestinians. A ceasefire is the moral choice. Palestinian children deserve to grow old, and the old deserve to die in peace. From Sacramento to Palestine, no occupation and stop funding genocide. Police are an occupying force in our brown, black, and brown, black, brown, and poor neighborhoods, with their military gear, no accountability, and trigger-happy fingers. We understand all too well what it means to be traumatized, profiled, and controlled by law enforcement. As oppressed people, we stand in solidarity with our Palestinian brothers and sisters because we too know what it means to be occupied. We say no more to Sacramento officials funding over $7 million to Israel just last year alone. We say no more to silence as an ethnic cleansing occurs. Truth is power, and silence is violence. We will mourn the dead, but we must still fight for the living. Sacramento stands with the people of Gaza and the West Bank and all, against all forms of oppression and occupation. We ask to end the apartheid now. Palestine will be free from the river to the sea. I'm really tired today because of the lies you guys have been spewing, the silence you have decided to choose when a horrific event is happening. Lisa Kaplan is over there twitching in her seat and couldn't stand sit like a toddler. Mai is the only one who's actually said the word Palestine in this building. None of you have even said that. I'm horrified and disgusted that you continue to use your money to fund Israeli occupation in a place that is not even theirs. Indigenous lives in Palestine matter.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is O, then Rev. And Rev is our final speaker this afternoon.
The White House continues to say the time is not right for a ceasefire between Israel and Gaza. So our question is, when is the right time? After thousands of more babies are bombed and murdered, when they bomb hundreds of more homes with families and children inside seeking refuge with nowhere to go, or when they have bombed or shut down every single hospital, or how about when there's not a single drop of water or food left? How much more blood, how many more bodies does Israel need for their so-called self-defense? If it was self-defense, we would see bodies of Israeli babies and women and their innocent civilians all over the internet getting bombed and murdered just as much as we are seeing it happen in Gaza, but the reason we are not seeing it is because those videos don't exist. It is not self-defense when there's been over 5,791 deaths, which consists of 2,360 children and 1,292 women. It is not self-defense when Israel bombed Gaza City with more than 12,000 tons of explosives, equivalent to the bomb that dropped on Hiroshima. I previously shared that I was not surprised when I learned that our police in this country are being trained by the IDF. I was not surprised when I found out that Derek Chauvin, the man who murdered George Floyd, was trained by the IDF. Lisa, this one's for you. The police chief of the officers that murdered Tyree Nichols also trained by the IDF. And the Atlanta PD, the same ones who murdered Tortuguita, also trained by the IDF. When IDF is killing innocent babies, then it's no wonder why SAC PD is okay with handcuffing a 10-year-old little girl in their pajamas or pulling guns on an eight-year-old little boy on his way to football practice. This city and this country clearly has no problem with funding the murder and oppression of the Palestine people and of our black and brown communities. If y'all are still silent about what side of history you're on when there is a side where babies and innocent lives are being massacred, then you are on the side of the oppressor. And for those of you who have made a very clear stance on whose side you're on and still show no humanity to the Palestine community, it's not black and brown people who are terrorists, it's you.
Our final speaker this evening? Rev? Rev is our final speaker.
My new acronym, so y'all know it, says faithfully understand Christ's kindness, you beautifully intelligent teachers Christ heal, I mean, you're just horribly intelligent guys, God anointed, as fuck you bitch nigga. Yeah, I know, that's the acronym, you listen to the acronym, hold on. Faithfully, no, 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 I'm doing things to make a change or difference, though. I don't curse curse. I don't, I don't curse. I just make up things to change it, like I've done a remix of Lean on Him to lean on, from Lean on Me to Lean on Him. like I've done a remix of Lean on Him to lean on, some Lean on Me to Lean on Him. So just listen in general to where, like I said, I have things, Mr. Steinberg, if you stop speaking with me, that I want to bring to the city. I've been doing this for 12 years, living in the streets for 12 years. And I ain't got no help from the city. I ain't got no help from no organizations. I'm finally gotten four nonprofits and six LLCs. Hello! Y'all talking to each other. I'm just saying, though. We can't whisper out here, and y'all can look at each other and talk. You know what I mean? Yeah, I know. Look. I should come up there and, I wish I could know where you live so I can walk between you when you're trying to talk to your little wife or your kids or something, so I can find your attention span. By the same token, young man, I'm talking to everybody, but he's like your head boss. I don't have one. I have God. I serve Him in a simple way. I just speak up loud when I have to. I had four sheriffs pull up on me last night because I tried to tell this lady to move from in front of my office building with a bunch of grease. I pulled up on by Arden Mall when I just come over there to go to the mall real quick to get some copies at FedEx. And a couple of sheriffs got a black man on a kind of motor scooter in the middle of, or side of the street. Soon as I get out, they jump in their car and roll off. I chased them to the middle of the street, and they hit me on the microphone, "Get out of the middle of the street. Stop messing with my people." So I pulled my limo all the way up to the light. They were stuck in the light. So I went up on the sidewalk. I was gonna walk across the red, but I knew they were gonna say something even though it's legal to do it. I'm respectful in the city. And you don't know me because you didn't call me either. When I had somebody direct card, I just expect that out of respect, especially because of the position you're on. But you don't care care like that. I don't know if you serve God or who you serve. I'm speaking to you, see eye contact directly to you, young lady.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Your time is complete.
No.
Rev, your time is complete. Please take your seat. Thank you.
No, it's, thank you. It's time for council comments and questions. I'm gonna speak first.
God bless you. Don't talk, Steinberg. Hold on. Let me get out of there. I don't want to hear you talking. Hold on. Hold on, wait a minute. Hold on. I don't want to get out of here. God bless you. I love y'all country, but y'all are my black people.
It's okay. Emotions are high. I want to say a couple of things to my Palestinian brothers and sisters. When you started leaving the chambers when someone was attacking me for accusing me of being a racist, your actions, your actions moved me. We are brothers and sisters. We are sacramentans. We are friends. We may have different points of view on the history of the wars and the conflicts between Israel and Palestine. But there is more that binds us than divides us. And I want to say to you that I recognize your humanity. I recognize the humanity of all the people, including the Palestinian people. I condemn the deaths of all innocent people, including the Palestinian people. I will never minimize the suffering of all civilians in war, including the innocent civilians in Gaza. I want peace. And I want a two-state solution, a Palestinian state and a safe and secure Israel. And maybe, 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 out of this terrible, terrible set of circumstances, there will be an environment that will allow for that because more reasonable people will step forward and make that peace. So please, I welcome you in these chambers tonight as a mayor, as a Jewish-American mayor who has a different point of view than you on some of these issues.